To order. Clerk Kalinga, would you please call the row?
Also, just as a reminder to indicate the city, county, and if you're outside the state, the state that you are currently located. Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Present in Ypsilanti in Washtenaw County.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Present Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Somerville?
Present Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson?
Present City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Morgan?
Present City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Simmons?
Present attending virtually from Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
Mr. Jones Chance? With six present, there is a quorum.
On.
All right.
Can we move to excuse?
Second.
Mr. Jones Chance?
It's been moved in second to excuse Mr. Jones Chance, all in favor?
I. He's here. He has his hand up in the invites.
Oh.
He is here?
He's in the attendees right now.
Oh.
Oh.
Can you let him in, Mr.?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay. All right, I see.
Well, I'll take that motion back.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Here, Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washtenaw County. I'm just not reliably getting the panelist invites for some reason.
Okay. All right. Mr. Langa?
Council, the next, the next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Uh, I would like to make, to move item D down to F and move E and F up, please. We have some people coming from the Arts Commission and that would like to speak to item D. And they have, will not be able to join us until after, until eight o'clock during a meeting, so.
One second there.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Simmons, did you have, want to change something on the agenda?
Wanted to provide an update and talk about the evaluations, but I could also do that during council business if that makes more sense.
Okay, or we could add it to as an item at the end of the agenda. I think it goes down to G.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I have it there.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay, can be the last item of, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other adjustments to the chart, I mean, to the agenda?
Um, I'd like to have a discussion about special events, festivals in particular.
Okay.
I can do it under manager's comment. I just want people to know that it's coming.
Okay.
I just want to see what council says.
All right, thank you. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, seeing none and hearing none. Uh, the agenda will stand approved as adjusted.
Right, Council, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to address council. There is a public hearing regarding the request to approve an off-premises tasting license for Ann Arbor Distilling. After presentations on the agenda, so if you are here to speak towards that, please wait until that item comes up. But the first individual with their hand raised is Jesse Miller, and I will allow them to speak now.
Good evening, can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, my name is Jesse Miller. I'm a resident of Ward Two. I am also the board member of the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority appointed by the city council in 2018. I'm here just to give a brief statement, voicing my strong personal support for the resolution requesting that M.D. Pursuit designed for reconfiguration of the intersections of Huron Cross and Hamilton, Washtenaw. As a resident of the second ward, these are both intersections I have negotiated many times in order to reach downtown and Depot Town, and as a pedestrian, the experience currently is at times akin to crossing like three lanes of highway traffic. I've been very excited about this, the potential for this project for a long time, and I think they have the potential to make our city more friendly to non-motorized traffic and the, and to the surrounding neighborhood, make the surrounding neighborhoods a safer and more accessible place to live. It's also my understanding that AAA has voiced their support for these projects as well, and support for the city's goal to encourage walking, biking, and transit, and to make the streets safer for everyone. And that they're also anxious for the opportunity to work with the city and M.D. to discuss this project. And on a separate note, while I'm here, the Ride is making plans to bring back full service levels. They will be announcing that March 4th later this week. Or at least there, there'll be accepted comments on their proposal, nothing is set in stone. The proposal will affect all routes and services. And it will, all, the proposal, including maps, will be available on the Ride.org beginning March 4th, and it'll be followed by a series of public engagement meetings, which I encourage you all to attend, but if you have any concerns, once those are released, you can please feel free to contact me or the organization directly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Larry. I will allow them to speak now.
You hear me?
Yes, okay.
Good evening, Larry Yap, North Huron Street, Ypsilanti. I'm sure you're not surprised to hear from me. I come here this evening requesting the city address the North Huron Alley obstructions. Not asking for any favors or preferential treatment. I am requesting the Code of Ordinances determine the solution to the problem. As an aside, although this problem is located in Ward Three, I believe it probably is a citywide issue. Some quotes for you, so both from outside and from the code. John Adams said that America isn't a company, is a government of laws, not of men. So what are Ypsilanti's relevant laws regarding the obstructions? Section 9482, encroachments prohibited. It shall be unlawful for any person to allow any encroachment or onto or into any city right of way except as provided by this code. That's from 1983. Should note that the city allowed the violate, a violation by issuing a permit through in 1996. Section 94254, obstruction. No person shall block, barricade, or obstruct an alley within the city except as otherwise provided in this code. That's from 1996. Relevant Jackson cleaners, the balcony violated it in 2008, and Smarty Caps, Smarty Cat's doorway violated it sometimes after 2008. So what are Ypsilanti's relevant laws regarding enforcement? Section 12231, duties and enforcement powers. It should be unlawful for the city manager or their delegate to approve any permits unless such plans have been inspected in detail and found to conform with this charter, with this chapter, excuse me. It was honestly, under no circumstances shall the city manager or their delegate be permitted to vary the terms of this chapter in carrying out its duties in administering and enforcing this code. These three code sections, by the way, I did send you a more exhaustive search that I did earlier today. Epitomize the turn, the entirety, but there's no legal basis for staff's refusal to enforce the removal of the instructions in the alley. On the contrary, the refusal is an absolute violation of Ypsilanti's Code of Ordinance. Another quote from public history, if our, John Adams wrote, if our laws can be applied willy-nilly at the discretion of a few powerful men, how can we ever trust that there will be equal justice under the law? As city council, you have the authority to stop the willy-nilly by requesting staff comply with the enforcement laws and address the obstructions. I'm asking you to exercise that authority. Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is John Weiss, and I will allow them to speak now.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. Yes, we can.
All right, great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Weiss. I live at 1206 Pearl Street in Ypsilanti. I'm joining tonight's meeting to urge you to support the resolution that I believe is going to come before council this evening to back the growing movement across the state for Michigan's single payer healthcare. I'm sure you all know what single payer healthcare is. It means a healthcare system in which providers are reimbursed by a single public funding source, and it's an idea that's long overdue. There are many benefits to single payer. Ninety-five percent of Michiganders would pay less and in many cases pay much less out of pocket. Healthcare would no longer be tied to employment. People have much greater freedom to work where they want without having to worry about losing their benefits. Would also help our city because small businesses would be able to attract better talent and have less turnover because employees will have their healthcare taken care of. And the cost of medical care will come down significantly because with a pool of millions across the state, the prices of medical equipment and pharmaceuticals would drop dramatically. And probably the, the most important thing is that healthcare should be a right. And single payer is also a racial equity policy. True justice comes when healthcare is not discriminated based on race, ability, or economic status. And that's what a single payer system does is provide true justice and a right to every citizen in Michigan. So I urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Dylan Goings. I'll allow them to speak now.
Good evening, Council. Dylan Goings, live in College Wood in Ypsilanti, and I am a member of the Non-Motorized Committee. I'm here just to echo the sentiments that Jesse Miller already laid out very clearly about the resolution to remake a couple of intersections Huron and Hamilton and over across with the one-way sort of free turn lanes. I used to actually live over there, right on Washtenaw and Ballard, right by that intersection, very familiar with it. And just wanted to voice my support as part of the Non-Motorized Committee. This has been something that's on our agenda for a long, long time. In fact, goes back to the, the 2010 Non-Motorized Plan. It will be in our updated 2020 Non-Motorized Plan. And so we're very, very excited to see this maybe finally moving forward. And I think it's also very relevant to note here tonight that this is just to support M.D., but it is not like giving over, you know, full control to M.D. to reimagine our city roadways. Obviously, council will be able to continue to monitor and provide input to the plan. Any concerned residents who maybe live by those areas or, or traffic those streets, they're going to have plenty more opportunities to provide input and to give feedback. So this isn't just like the last time we get to decide whether something will be done to reimagine those intersections. So I think it's just a very important first step that we take to just make some of these streets much, much, much safer for pedestrians and bicyclists and differently able people to, to cross and get around or downtown safely. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Mark Arthur. I'll allow them to speak now.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm a member of the third ward. Over the past five years, I've lived in two different places on East Cross Street. And I often take the bus, I walk to the bus station and have nearly been hit and try my best to avoid particularly Huron and Cross just because it is really just crazy how, how dangerous it is. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm just here to echo what Jesse Miller said and, and others that, that, you know, that I really support and I'm very excited about the idea and proposal to start, you know, rethinking. Both of those intersections, yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, it's what I think from, you know, what, one of the things that makes Ypsilanti so special, Depot Town so special, is the, the walkability and how pedestrian friendly it is, and it's just, you know, scary and wild what that, what that intersection is like. And, and I'm also thinking about, you know, just the growing, you know, larger growing movement to make streets more pedestrian friendly. You can look to Oakland, California, where there's been huge success with all kinds of, you know, improvements and alterations and changes to make streets more walkable and, and safe. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Renee Echols. I will allow them to speak now.
Good evening. I just wanted to also voice my support for the resolution, supporting M.D. taking out the slip lanes. I cannot emphasize how dangerous those kinds of intersections are for all pedestrians and in particular for disabled pedestrians. I live in the third ward and I, I use that intersection quite frequently. In 2019, I obtained my third seeing eye dog. And I had a trainer come out and work with me a few months after I got home. And she looked at that intersection as a professional who, you know, works with blind visually and visually impaired individuals on a regular basis for years. She observed that intersection particularly on the southwest corner, crossing over north Huron to the other side to the southeast corner. And it was just, she just told me not to even use it. It's just, it's, it's just not safe. To have an intersection like that in the middle of a high pedestrian area is, it's just unthinkable and with increasing numbers of families with children living here with Depot Town really increasing their presence in the community. There's a playground at Riverside with increasing amount of seniors and disabled folks walking in the community. I think it's just really important to make sure that we have safe street crossings. So I just, I'm really glad that this has been brought up and I want to voice my support for it as also a member of the Non-Motorized, Non-Motorized Advisory Committee. So I really support that. And I also just wanted to mention, I joined, I was able to listen to the mayor's discussion on Friday for Black History Month with some of the elders of the community, and I really enjoyed it. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation of that and hope that there can be more discussions like that because I, it was, it's, I just think it's so important to hear from the elders of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee, and thanks for joining us.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Leah Dotson. Allow them to speak now.
Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Cool. Hi, my name is Leah. I live on Congress. I've lived in Ypsie for going on eight years now. I wanted to take some time tonight just to voice my support for the Medicare for All Act that's being considered this evening for Ypsie City Council to support. I volunteered for a very long time with the M for All groups here in the area and been really supportive of them. I am someone that believes that healthcare is a human right, and I do think moving towards the single payer is really the, the best solution that we, we can see at this point, and I would love to see our city and our county being a leader in supporting this, especially when we look at the Michigan Care that we're looking at right now that's being introduced by Rep. Yusef Robbie. Him being from, again, Washtenaw County, I just would really love to see Ypsie City be able to stand behind him and support this resolution. And I'm just really excited to see that I am from somewhere that actually takes healthcare seriously, and, and I do think that the majority of the people that live here seem to see it as a human right, and it's something that we've been advocating for, and we do have a community of a lot of people that struggle to get healthcare and to get coverage. So it is something that I think directly impacts us as a city and as a community. And I'm just excited to see us considering it, and I really hope that we'll be able to support that resolution this evening. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Desiree Simmons. I'll allow them to speak now.
Hello, good afternoon, good, oh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I just wanted to say a quick comment. I was excited to see the Medicare for All Act presentation that's on the agenda as well as the resolution following it. I did want to note, I actually was thinking about this resolution, how it says it's support because of the benefit to the community as well as to the city's budget. How it calls on federal legislators to work toward immediate enactment and also express a support for a bill at the state level. And thinking about how this is exactly the same kind of thing that can happen for a resolution to repeal rent control, the rent preemption law here in the city because it also has benefits to the community. It also has had incident bill one, 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 two, nine in 2020 from our own state rep, Jeff Irwin, had put a bill to call for the repeal of the preemption, and so council could write a resolution to support that. It's also been voted in as part of the Democratic, the state party platform to work towards that repeal of the law, and since this is a partisan council, I would think that would also matter. So I see that this is something that's possible, so I would encourage council to think about how they could do that around rent control, preemption. And then also just to also say for the, to think about again, continuing to ask council to consider and do work around the local area median income as we think about new development, what does it look like, what work needs to happen in order to support the people who live here and the residents who live and work here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, that was the last speaker on the list. If you'd like to wait a few minute or moments before moving on, we can. If not, we can move on to the presentations.
I just made a quick comment. I wanted to mention for folks that are in the attendees, I know that I see a handful of people who might be here to talk about the housing reentry fund, and I just wanted to let them know that there's not a special time during that agenda item to talk. So if you wanted to talk about that right now and give a comment, it would be the appropriate time.
We have Kathy Wyatt. Okay, there is an individual, their hand raised. I'll allow them to speak now.
Thank you. Kathy, you need to unmute yourself.
Oh, okay, thank you. Got ahead. Hello, everyone. My name is Kathy Wyatt, and I wanted to speak on behalf of the resolution providing a donation, a contribution to the mitigation fund that would assist people who have, are reentering, who have been incarcerated with obtaining adequate housing. Washtenaw County is a very difficult housing market, as we all know. And at the same time, people who have been incarcerated, who have criminal records, who have paid their debt to society, served their time have a great deal of difficulty when they return finding any housing. And there is this effort through the Washtenaw County. There's a collaboration under the prosecutors and Public Defender's Office. We have a reentry committee that is working on housing issues. And one, we are developing a pilot with a mitigation fund to help with the challenges around getting housing to help with damaged deposits. And this, the donation to this mitigation fund would be a really important contribution to criminal justice reform, to making lives better for those who have been hurt by the war on drugs and particularly marijuana and other convictions. So I hope, I urge you to support this. In having talked with councilperson Somerville, it is right in line with the purpose of the fund. Thank you. I hope, I urge you to support the contribution.
Thank you, Kathy.
Council, that was the last individual with their hand raised that hasn't already spoken.
All right, thank you. We can move on then. I want to thank everyone that did come and speak during our audience participation time. Thank you.
Okay, Council, the next item on the agenda is the presentations. There is a proclamation in honor of Women's Month. That was sponsored by Mayor Richardson. And I will go ahead and read that now. Whereas every year, March is designated Women's History Month by presidential proclamation, the month is set aside to honor women's contribution in American history. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. Whereas from Abigail Adams to Susan B. Anthony, Sojourner Truth, and Rosa Parks to Kamala Harris, the timeline of Women's History Milestone stretches back to the founding of the United States. Whereas American women have played a unique role through the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. Whereas American women are, were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace, peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite this contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, hereby proclaim March 2021 as Women's Month in the City of Ypsilanti.
Thank you, Clerk Kalinga, for reading that. Appreciate it. Thank you. And I'd just like to add that I believe that Women's Month is not, should not just be And I'd just like to add that I believe that Women's Month is not, should not just be March, but all year long. I think if we removed women from the equation in this country, things would not be quite, would not keep going. So, thank you. Clerk Kalinga.
The next item, counsel, on the agenda is a presentation regarding Medicare for All Act of 2019. So I will give the floor to Eli Rubin.
Hello, thank you all for letting me present here. It's a, it's really an honor with such, such great civic leaders. Andrew, there's a PowerPoint presentation that if you could go ahead and put it up on the screen share. That's, that's perfect. Thank you. So just, this'll take about 10 minutes. It's sort of a quick run through of the issues. And I'm happy to answer any questions too, because there's, it's a very complex issue. It involves 20% of our whole economy and touches every, every life in this country and, and your community. So there's a lot more to be said. But just by way of introduction, I help lead a volunteer organization called Michigan for Single Payer Healthcare. And we're, we work with lots and lots of other orgs and partners. And we've had a lot of great meetings with state legislators and federal legislators, including Ronnie Peterson. And we're working with a national organization called Public Citizen, which has a national campaign to have every municipality in America pass these kinds of resolutions, which are symbolic, but are important for showing our leaders at the federal level or even the state level how much support there really is at the grassroots level. And so that's why we're engaged in this. If you could go to the next slide, Andrew. And, you know, we often start off with this quote that, that Dr. King said in 66. Because the healthcare, when you, when you discriminate and when there's injustice in healthcare, it goes directly to people's ability to live. I mean, it, it, it goes straight to the question of your life itself. So that's, this is one of the quotes that guides us in our work. Could you go to the next slide, please? And for our organization, our, our vision is to achieve a country in which everybody gets the care that they need, regardless of what kind of wealth background, class background, ethnic background they have. And right now, that's definitely not the case. So if you could go to the next slide, Andrew. So I often like to, you know, just, just kind of outline very briefly the depth of the problem that we have in this country. We, we are the only country in certainly the industrialized world, but even in what we used to call the third world or the developing world, there are many, many countries that are ahead of us. That there are different ways that different countries deliver universal healthcare. There's different models. There's like the Canadian model. There's the Japanese model. There's the German model. There's the Israeli model, but they all provide it. We're the only ones that don't. And, and the irony is that we're the richest country in the world. And, and we actually spend a lot more on healthcare than, than other countries, but we don't cover everybody. And for that, we get much worse health outcomes. When you look at our spending, we're number one in the world. When you look at our health outcomes, like infant mortality, maternal health, all of that stuff, we're, you know, we're somewhere between, sandwiched between like Bulgaria and Nepal. And, you know, and then if you break this down by race and ethnicity, it looks even worse. And I'm sure, you know, people, you've heard people talk about the truly shameful statistics that our country has for, like, for example, for women of color in terms of like infant mortality and maternal health. And, you know, passing the ACA, Obamacare was a huge step forward. And, and it's been under attack and it's been weakened by, you know, enemies. But it's withheld those attacks, but it still didn't go far enough. And, and you listen to Obama talk, and it was never meant to be the final step. It was supposed to be a bridge. Because, you know, there's still 30 million Americans that don't have health insurance. And there's still around 45,000 people a year who die directly as a lack of not having health insurance. But also there's another 41 million who are underinsured. They've got health insurance, but their deductible is so high. You know, their copays are so high that they don't go to the doctor anyway, because they wouldn't be able to afford to use their insurance. Andrew, the next slide, please. And, you know, this is all the case before the COVID-19 pandemic hit us. And the pandemic has exposed some of the worst flaws in our, in our system. And, you know, obviously tying insurance to employment, it was never a good idea. But now it has really hit home, because so many people lost their jobs as a result of the pandemic. And even worse, people haven't been going to the doctor. Some of that's due to the pandemic itself, but a lot of it's due to the people losing their jobs and losing their healthcare insurance. And so public officials are now worried that once this, this pandemic is over, hopefully by this year, there's going to be a second after wave of deaths and health problems that are not COVID, but are the results of people not going to the doctor because of chronic conditions, feeling a lump in their breast, or, you know, a cough that will go away. And things that could have been caught early and fixed will now lead to more deaths by cancer, by heart disease, and so on. And then, of course, as we've seen, and we are seeing right now, right here in our own county, the, you know, the COVID outcomes are worse for low-income communities, black and brown communities. And the theory there is that just, you know, part of that is just the, the long-running lack of access to routine healthcare. And so COVID is exposing lots of underlying conditions that folks have, haven't been discovered. And then, of course, we're seeing the vaccine rollout following the same pathways of inequity. So they're not getting to black and brown communities. They're not getting to low-income communities, because medicine in our system chases money. And it chases privilege. And, you know, and, and so that's, that's a real big problem that this pandemic is exposing and, and exacerbating. Next slide, please. And then, of course, we talked about municipalities. Easily around 10%. I don't have the exact numbers on Ypsilanti. You guys could maybe correct me on that. But the average is between 7 and 12%. Both municipal and county budgets are, you know, the, the costs are being spent on employee healthcare. That's actually better than some businesses that are spending upwards of 20, 25%. But needless to say, having Medicare for All provided at the federal level would be an immense burden lifted off of the budgets of municipalities like Ypsilanti, counties like Washtenaw. Next slide. And then, so just in general, healthcare costs have, have exploded and have gotten a lot worse even before the pandemic. Since 2008, deductibles have gone up 200, over 200%. You know, this average deductible, and this is the average, 13, over $1,300. The average American doesn't have $400 saved for an emergency. 67% of all the bankruptcies that happen in this country, about a million people, is just due to medical bills. This is a phenomenon unheard of in any other country in the world. It is a purely American thing, that people go bankrupt because they have to go to the doctor. A quarter of all Americans struggle to pay medical bills. The largest category in GoFundMe is over a billion dollars a year is medical debt. The, the CEO of GoFundMe spoke out about this, that he'd never started the GoFundMe idea as, as, as an alternate form of healthcare financing. And the worst of all of these, I think, is that if you get cancer in this country, you have almost a one in two chance of being completely destitute within two years of your diagnosis. If you get it, you are going to have to sell everything. So go to the next slide. And, you know, these are hard stories to watch. This is a Twitter thread that started spontaneously and grew to thousands and thousands of responses from all over the country. And so I usually just sort of shut up and let people read a few of these stories. They're just the tip of the iceberg. Again, other than some of the very most impoverished countries, developing countries in the world, these stories are unknown in any other country, whether it's Canada, whether it's Japan, whether it's Italy, wherever. Next slide, please. So what's being proposed here is the Medicare for All Act of, well, it was of 2019. It will be reintroduced very shortly, as soon as President Biden gets the COVID relief out the door. They'll, they'll start reintroducing these things. So it'll be renamed the Medicare for All Act of 2021. And it'll have a different bill name. And just real quick, the way it works is everyone will be automatically enrolled. You don't have to enroll. You don't have to apply. There's no hoops to jump through. If the government has your name and address, you will get a card in the mail with your name, a Medicare card, and that will pay for all your healthcare needs. There won't be any copays. There won't be any premiums or deductibles or any other out-of-pocket costs. You won't have to worry that, you know, for a lot of people, even a $30 copay is too much to go, when their kid has a really high fever, to the, to the pediatrician is too much. And all of that will be gone. If you need help, you just go get help. And, and, and so what the coverage includes is everything that Medicare covers now, but also some things that Medicare doesn't cover right now, such as vision services, dental services, hearing aids, long-term elder and long-term disability care, transportation, if you don't live within easy access of healthcare. And of course, people will say, you know, how, how can we possibly afford all of this? You know, people, hospitals are constantly billing insurance way more than, than things actually cost. And so this uses what's called global budgeting. It's basically like assigning hospitals a budget. You, $400 million, and if you, and if you, you know, and if you blow through that, you're on your own. The government won't reimburse you for that anymore. And it's based on their previous expenditures. That way, they, they can't just charge, you know, $100,000 for an ice pack from the government. Next slide, please. And one of the, one of the other parts of this that some people find controversial is that private health insurance will have a very decreased role. They can't compete with, with Medicare. They can't offer the same services. And the reason for that is simply that if we allow that, the thinking is we will have a two-tiered system in which the privileged and the wealthy will get the private insurance and they'll be able to get in anywhere they want to go. And the poor, lower-income, less privileged people will get the Medicare, and they'll get turned away at a lot of places. But if there's only one Medicare for everybody, nobody can turn you away. And there can be supplemental plans that private companies can offer. You know, for example, Medicare offers like, you know, six chiropractic visits a year, and you know you have a bad back. You might want more than six. So you might, you know, pay for a little extra, for a little extra policy on that gives you more chiropractor visits. But also, there's a transitional period that, to, to phase it in by age. The, the House bill, which is introduced by, by Representative Geppol from Seattle, and also by Representative Dingle, our representative, will be transitioned in over two years. The Bernie Sanders bill in the Senate is a four-year transition. This is very generous. Both of them offer salary replacement for displaced insurance work, insurance company workers, who, many of whom will get preferential hiring to be rehired by an expanded Medicare. But also, they will get funding to replace their salary or to use to go back to school, to retrain, or to simply retire early. Next slide. And the big thing is that we like to put out in big, bold letters, is that people will say, again, that's great, but we can't afford it. What's really hard to explain to folks is that this would actually save us money. If you think about all the money our country spends, both in terms of the government spending it, like Medicare and Medicaid, but also in terms of individual people, private people, businesses, spending it on like Blue Cross Blue Shield, and you add it all up, it's, it's, it's approaching $4 trillion a year. And, and it soon will be expanding to like $6, $7 trillion a year. And that's because of the inefficiency in the system. And if we were to switch to a Medicare for All system, we would cut down on that inefficiency and save us between 2 and 5 trillion over 10 years. And the 2 trillion figure is one that was come up with, came up with by a conservative think tank. Even they can't deny that it would save us money, the 5 trillion by a much more liberal think tank. So even if you split the difference and say it'll save us 3 trillion, that's enough over a decade to fix every road and bridge and, and school building in this, in this whole country, or send everybody to college. Next slide. And so again, just some of the, the pros to kind of go through as we, as I wrap this up. Imagine a system in which every provider is in-network, right? So if you, if you have a heart attack or a car accident and you're rushed to whatever the nearest hospital is, you don't have to worry, but when you wake up to find out that hospital isn't in your network, and now you're on the hook for $10,000 or more. If you travel to another state, it doesn't matter. The same card is good in Ohio or Arizona or anywhere. I'm in a union, and I know every time we negotiate our contract, we always end up having to choose between like a wage raise or, or a better healthcare deal. It's, you can never get both. And they are always using the healthcare costs as a way to push down our wages. And unions spend so much of their time negotiating healthcare deals. What if they only ever had to, to negotiate on workplace safety and wages? And the healthcare part of it was just not on the table to worry about. We, the data isn't super great, but we, we think that between 12 and 15% of people who are working for companies right now are only working for those companies because of the benefits. And if they had benefits guaranteed no matter what, they would start their own businesses. So this is what you say to Republicans and conservatives. You say entrepreneurship would skyrocket if we had this. We don't have great data on this either, but we know anecdotally that a lot of women stay in abusive relationships because they can't afford to go, because they have a special needs child, or they have a chronic condition. They can't afford to be on their own for them and their kids. Next slides, please. We know that auto insurance ends up getting used as health insurance. So when you pay high auto insurance bills, you're actually paying partially health insurance. That would be reduced. Same thing with any kind of liability insurance. It's baked into your homeowner's insurance. It's baked into any liability, workman's comp, malpractice insurance. University tuition reflects the, the huge increase in, in, in staff and faculty's healthcare costs. You know, if you decide to change your job, if you lose your job, it's not, it's, it's bad, obviously. You don't want to lose your job, but it's not a catastrophe. You're not left without healthcare, right? It can be life or death for some people if they lose their jobs. And I think what really comes out from talking to doctors about this is that they spend about 40% of their time fighting with insurance companies or paying people to the tune of $80,000 a year to fight with insurance companies for billing. And most of them say, I got into medicine to heal people, to help people. And instead, I end up having to become a part-time insurance agent. Next slide. So, so this is the, the, I guess this is the, 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 this is the resolution. Anyway, so that kind of wraps it up. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know how much time there is. If folks want to ask questions, there's more to be said about this. But I really thank you for your attention to this. I really thank you for considering this resolution.
Thank you, Eli.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from counsel?
I just wanted to make an, I just wanted to ask a question or make a point. I know you mentioned the pros on there, but you didn't show any cons on there. And I just wanted to know, two of the cons were, you know, I know doctors perhaps could have less flexibility in negotiating their own rates. And it could be a con that it could diminish the quality of care that people receive. I want to ask him his take on those.
Yeah. Counsel member, I think Will Coxon also mentioned, I should have a cons thing on there. So maybe I will add that in. The, the issue of reducing rates for reimbursement would only really apply in, in the case of really upscale, like doctors, you know, who are working in like boutique practices. So they will use what's called, it's a technical term called community rating, where they will look at basically what people have been, have been reimbursed before, when you're talking about individual doctors. And that will And that will, that will stay, that will stay steady. Now, when you're talking about hospitals, that where your concern comes in a little bit more, comes in a little bit more. So, you know, right now, private insurance reimburses for procedures about 0.7% or, in other words, like seven percent higher than, than, than like Medicare does. And Medicare is, is a little bit higher than Medicaid. And so a lot of hospitals will tell you that they need the private patients to balance out the money that they say that they lose by treating Medicaid and Medicare patients. Our feeling about that is that they, again, they're given a global budget. So they can, they can kind of like do the math and figure out how much money, you know, they need. And they can negotiate that budget with Medicare. But also, imagine how many people in this country use the emergency rooms of hospitals as their primary form of healthcare because they don't have insurance at all. And the hospitals take a huge loss every time they treat somebody who comes in without insurance and, you know, and you can, you can go on a Saturday night to St. Joe's and ask people to raise their hand, how many don't have insurance? It's like 85% of the people. So they're taking a loss on that. Imagine if every single one of those people could whip out their Medicare card. Right? So our theory and our belief is, and our, when people have studied this, is that those things will even out and the hospitals will basically get about what they've been getting. I hope that answers your question to some degree. I think.
I saw Mr. Wilcoxon's hand up.
Oh, excuse me. I just want to say that, you know, this is long overdue. You know, when the ACA came up, there were a number of concessions made. And as Eli had pointed out, you know, this was, that was intended to be the first step. That was not supposed to be the end, the end of that conversation. And, you know, Barack Obama, you know, knew that there were concessions to getting that passed. And that was a great first step. But I, you know, I think that we've seen how inefficient the system is as, as it stands now. You know, and, and many of the points that Eli made in the presentation is like, as, as the wealthiest nation in the world, we have some of the worst healthcare and it leaves out so much of our population that it's unconscionable. And having worked at U of M, been an employee, been a student and been covered by their health insurance and for them to say to me at some point that while due to the rising cost of healthcare, we're going to do this to your salary and we're going to do this to your coverage. And I was like, well, you control all that. And so, you know, there's no benevolence in that system. And, you know, doing this by, by public government means, means that people have a feedback mechanism in this rather than the market system, which hasn't, hasn't been responsive to this at all. Because in the market system, you really don't have a choice because, you know, it's, it's pretty much, the insurance companies have game this from, from the outset. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. So I'll just leave it at that.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank Eli for presenting that to us. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. I wanted to say thank you also, Eli. Some very good information. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Thank you, Eli. I appreciate it. And having actually lived in several other countries, including the poorest nation in the Western Hemisphere, each one of those nations had national health insurance. And the poorest nation, Haiti, even Haiti had, you know, and it's unbelievable that we, the richest nation, we don't have it. So I thank you for your presentation and I will be supporting this and have supported it. So thank you. If no other comments or questions, Mr. Halanga?
Counsel, the next item on the agenda, or the section rather, are public hearings. And I'll go ahead and read Resolution 2021-037 into the record. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas Robert Cleveland, representative of the Ann Arbor Distilling Company, has applied to the City of Ypsilanti and Michigan Liquor Control Commission requesting the following. Approval of an off-premises tasting room license, MCL 436.1536. As defined, a distiller or small distiller license, licensee may have an approved tasting room at a, at a location off its licensed manufacturing premises where it may sell spirits it makes. The off, off-site location is 102 West Michigan, Ypsilanti, Michigan, 48197 Washtenaw County. And whereas a public hearing to consider the application for an off-premises tasting room license was duly noticed and held on March 2nd, 2021. Now therefore be it resolved at the request of Robert Cleveland, representative for the property located at 102 West Michigan Avenue. Be approved contingent upon building department approval and issuance of certificate of occupancy as well as Washtenaw County Health Department approval.
Thank you. Is your support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there?
Counsel Robert Cleveland is here to answer any questions that you might have. Whatever your preference is, you can either ask questions preceding the public hearing or following it.
Any questions or comments from counsel?
I can wait till after the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, we'll go to the public hearing, Clerk Kalinka.
So this will be a time for any member of the attendees list that wishes to make comment specific to this application for off-premises tasting room. So if you do have a question, please raise your hand. Or comment for that matter. Okay, there doesn't appear to be anyone raising their hand. I can go ahead and read the resolution to close the public hearing. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the public hearing to consider an off-premises tasting room license for Ann Arbor Distilling Company be officially closed.
To move.
Court. Been moved and supported.
You can do a voice note.
Voice, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the ayes have it. Okay, now are there any questions or comments? Mr. Wilcoxon, did you have a question?
I just had one question, probably more, but I'll, I'll live into this. We often, with the liquor licenses, there's, I was just wondering if there was the clause of putting of, sorry. Is this like the liquor licenses that we have approved in the past in which they've put a lot of work into this over the $75,000? I, I don't recall in, and the application, if that was the case.
Those are for redevelopment liquor licenses. This is not.
This is not that. All right. Thank you.
Any other question?
I have a comment. This is my comment. And I, I know it's an off-site or off-premises bar, if you will, as if we need more bars or more liquor here in Ypsilanti. I appreciate business owners being able to set up shop where they feel comfortable and where they feel like businesses can thrive. I, I can't, again, another business owner that owns a business in Ypsilanti that doesn't live in Ypsilanti that will capitalize off our market. Again, I appreciate it, but on this application also of beyond needing permits for off-premises tasting rooms and Sunday sales permit services, entertainment permit, extended hours and outdoor service. Um, is this seems as if, again, with the saturation of bars that we have here. And again, just being a little sister of Ypsilanti, it's always, it seemed like having business in different, again, we celebrate diversities, celebrate having different revenue streams for our city. And, and feeling like Ann Arbor's little sister sometimes is, I, I, I'm hesitant just to give up more of our city to be a playground for Ann Arbor. And I, I apologize if that's crash. However, um, having traffic, I'm wondering why not Ypsilanti Township, or why not Celine? And why not Belleville? Why not Canton? But I appreciate the fact that Ypsilanti is a location where many people want to come and, and start businesses or get actual extra businesses to feed their families. So that's one of my comments. Again, I'm all for business. I'm all for newness. I'm all for generating money for our, our tax base and things of that nature. I'm just, I've seen businesses that have set up in, in different ways and, and, and some of the new energy that comes around and it just still doesn't feel Ypsilanti. Doesn't look Ypsilanti. It doesn't include all of Ypsilanti. So I hope those things are worked through before we say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Would it be okay for me to address Counselperson Morgan's comments directly or do you want me to wait till the end?
No, you can answer.
Okay, great. Mr. Morgan, first of all, I certainly appreciate your position on this issue. And we're, we're quite sensitive to it, which is why the branding is not going to be Ann Arbor Distilling Company on the corner of Michigan and Huron. It will actually be branded as the Ypsilanti Cocktail Club. We'll be bringing our products in that we produce in Ann Arbor. But if you take a look at our portfolio, the branding for Ann Arbor itself is very diminished. The only time you're ever going to really see a reference on our labels is the obligatory comment that we have to put in for the federal government that explains who made it. There's a small A2DC moniker on the labels, but we actually have six different brands that we produce that are, that all have various brands that are not designed to focus on just the city of Ann Arbor. Our distiller is a resident of the city of Ann Arbor. His name is Brandon Johns. He's been heavily involved in the Ypsilanti community for a very long time. He's worked with Growing Hope. In fact, he lives right around the corner from them. My daughter and her husband live on 49 South Summit. And of course, will be staffing the tasting room with people who, who live and, and work in Ypsilanti. So we're not coming in and planting an Ann Arbor Distilling Company flag on, on the corner, as I said. And we also do hope and expect that we'll be participating in the community in much the same way that we participate in the Ann Arbor community. We do a lot of outreach. Certainly over the last year, we've done a ton of outreach, but we are constantly supporting nonprofits in the local community in Ann Arbor that ranges from Mott Children's Hospital to the Huron Valley Humane Society, Elise Place of Ann Arbor. And we expect that we'll be engaging the nonprofits and other organizations in the Ypsilanti community as well. There's been some discussions already with Growing Hope about providing them with some of our product that when it's purchased, there's a donation that goes to them. Sourcing from some of the local farms and nonprofits that are used to support rehabilitation in the community. So that combined with the, the fairly substantial effort that went into rehabbing that building itself, which I'm sure you well remember what it looked like, you know, right around 2018, 2019. I hope that we're making a positive impact to the city of Ypsilanti, not just through tax dollars, but by being an anchor point for the community as a whole. And really what we hope, sort of acting as another book and to increase the traffic and cre, increase the pedestrian participation in that corridor that runs from Hamilton to Huron. We've seen a lot of great active development, but we feel that having us at the end of that corridor there will really continue to solidify the traffic, the interest, and really be a contributing part of the community.
I appreciate your remarks.
Counselor Member Somerville?
Yeah, I just, I wasn't gonna, I didn't really have anything until I started listening to some of what you were mentioning about your plans for community involvement. And just curious, does, do you currently have a policy that, that is accessible for like reentry, folks who are reentering society? I know you mentioned like some, you mentioned reentry in terms of like local farms that are doing work. And I wasn't sure if you meant like reentry the way that I think about it. So I'd be interested if you have anything to share on that. And if not, I'm happy to have a conversation offline, but the, I was connecting the dots there. I was like, I wonder, you know, I was wondering if that's what you meant when you said reentry?
Sure. Well, I think one of the things that we do is look to source as much of our raw ingredients as possible. And I don't want to get, you know, I'm happy to have a conversation with you offline, but I'm aware that there's at least one farm in Ann Arbor that, that employs folks who are coming out of incarceration and, you know, they develop products. And so Brandon, our distiller, talked about creating an Ypsilanti gin, which would be a standalone product line, but using resources from that farm specifically and then donating some of the proceeds back based on sales, not just at the tasting room by the lib, but also as they go into distribution too. So that, that's kind of what I was referring to. It's still fairly early days. We're just trying to get over this first tranche of, of, you know, getting everything pulled together and get it open. So that combined with everything that's happened in the last 12 months has put us a little bit behind where we had hoped to be at this point in time. But those are the kind of things I'm talking about. With respect specifically to employment, you know, it's certainly something that we'd be happy to take a look at. There is a little bit of a skill set that goes into this, but it's not something that couldn't be managed through a, a training program that brought people that, that gave people those skill sets.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more smart question?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland, how many employees do you have that works at the Ann Arbor Distillery Company?
We have eight right now.
Okay, that's fairly small.
I'm sorry, I should also mention that we do have a, we do have a facility already in Ypsilanti. It is on Airport Drive. And this is where we do all of our labeling and manage all of our throughput. So we do plan on continuing to increase our, our footprint in the Ypsilanti area. I know that, you know, storage and labeling doesn't sound very sexy, but it is an important part of our, important part of our business. And we did locate that in Ypsilanti because, you know, we have folks that live there. We have folks that work there. The, our operations manager lives in Ypsilanti as well. So, you know, it's a shorter drive for him. Basically, that was, you know, how we came to that conclusion. But we're certainly not rolling into Ypsilanti and then, and then heading back home to Ann Arbor every single evening.
Thank you. I appreciate the, appreciate the time. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? We thank you, Mr. Cleveland, for coming and sharing with us this evening. And we will call for a vote upon the, the ordinance. I'm sorry, on the, the hearing.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Member Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Counselor Member Morgan?
No.
Counselor Member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Counselor Member Wilcoxon?
Yes.
With six yes and one no, the motion carries.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Mr. Cleveland, for coming and sharing with us this evening. And again, thank you, Mr. Cleveland, for coming and sharing with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And looking forward to you being a good contributor to the life here in Ypsilanti. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Also, moving on to the next section of the agenda. We have the consent resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number 2021-040, approving the minutes of February 16th, 2021. Resolution number 2021-041, approving ordinance 1374, an ordinance to amend city code, chapter 122 zoning ordinance, second reading.
It's a move. Support.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda. This is a voice vote, correct?
This is a roll, roll call vote.
It's a roll, okay.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next section of the agenda. Resolution number 2021-042. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas this, there is presently no city ordinance regarding the names or naming of parks. And whereas city council determines in the best interest of the city to have a standard stated procedure for the naming of parks. And whereas there presently exists a city ordinance 94-161 SEC for naming streets. And whereas that ordinance is suitable to amend to include naming parks. Now, now therefore, the ordinance entitled an ordinance to add parks to the street name ordinance is adopted on second and final reading.
A move?
For.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments from council?
Council, prior to moving into discussion, this was, this had dissent on it when it approved on first reading. At this point, there have been no amendments to the ordinance. So if you'd like to discuss any possible amendments, now would be the time.
Seeing no hands. We can move on with the, with the vote, Mr. Hulanga.
I have one question.
Yes.
Well, according, it says retention of existing names. The existing name of any such highway, street, or alley, bridge, park should not be changed without an ordinance adopted by the affirmative vote of seven of the authorized members. So it has to be unanimous in order for us to make any changes.
Right.
According to the way, according to the way this ordinance reads at this time, yes. But I believe that if you, if council wants to change that, now would be the time to discuss it.
I want to, did I make a motion to, I like, I like to make a motion to make a majority vote to change the name? I can't imagine when we're having discussions about in the future, we're all going to agree. And if we don't agree, I think that makes a stalemate for progress. So it should be a way if we can come to a decision without a unanimous decision. But that's just what I'm thinking.
Is there a second to that motion? Okay, Mr. Morgan, I'm not seeing a second or hearing a second to that motion, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Wilcoxen?
I guess I'm wondering if the, the lack of second for that is, if people are thinking of this is a way to address some of the concerns that were voiced in the last meeting in terms of, you know, people were concerned about having this happen quickly and repetitively. And, and I'm wondering if people are thinking that by having this be unanimous, that, that ensures that there is significant contemplation of the, of the change and significant hurdle to getting the changes in place. And so that's just a question to the rest of council.
Do we, I can't think too often, will we agree unanimously for anything really? So.
Councilmember Somerville?
I was gonna say, I didn't, like, I didn't support this last time. And I'm not going to support it this time. But I do think that like, perhaps that's why, because it should be hard. It should be a difficult decision that council needs to think very hard about.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I think thinking hard about it is one thing. But if one person thinks hard and thinks in the opposite direction, it's still, it's still me. So we all have to be on the same page to make anything happen. So that's just saying we all have to agree after we think hard. We have to agree and come to consensus. That's what I'm saying. Even if we think for three months, coming to consensus is still what's necessary to make a change. I think that makes it almost impossible.
Oh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I can, I can appreciate the hurdle aspect and having it be a little bit difficult. But I do take Mr. Morgan's point, especially if the request originates from within the community, you know, from a neighborhood, for example. I would, I would hope that council would sort of take that as a sort of direction and maybe would weigh the community desire a little bit differently. And we would come to a unanimous conclusion. But that's the only risk to that that I would see. But I do think the barrier should be a little high.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none. Clerk of Language, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
No.
Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Motion carries with five yes votes, two no votes.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item. It is resolution number 2021-043, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti whereas city council's adoption of ordinance 1344 in 2019 and ordinance 1371 in 2020 requires that 1,000 from each marijuana facility application be used for criminal justice issues related to marijuana prohibition. And whereas the Washtenaw Housing Alliance will be administering a reentry fund created by the Washtenaw County Community Stakeholders Reentry Committee. And whereas the purpose of the fund is to assist those previously incarcerated to find housing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council allocates 5,000 to the Washtenaw Housing Alliance for the purpose of assisting in the funding of the reentry mitigation fund specific to those being released as a result of marijuana charges to be drawn from account number 101-7-2150-835-00.
A move?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments? Councilmember Somerville, would you like to share a little bit about this?
Sure. Yeah, I think Kathy Wyatt did a pretty good job at explaining the purpose and intent. But as many of you recall, part of what I really wanted when we opted into recreational cannabis was to create a system to put money back into efforts that would, would, you know, undo some, some of the harm caused by the war on drugs relevant to cannabis prohibition. And I think housing is obviously a huge issue in Washtenaw County, but it's particularly difficult for folks returning from jail or prison. And when people don't have access to housing, they oftentimes end up back into the system. So this is just one way. And obviously, the fund will look differently every year depending on how many permit fees we have. And, you know, obviously, there's room for that to grow. And there's room for this program. It's just a pilot right now for it to grow. So I feel like right now it's, we'll have to see how this goes and how Ypsilanti plays into that. But I think that it's, it's a good, it's a good effort on our behalf if we do decide to utilize this funding in that way. I know that aside from this, like expungement is also something. But I think housing goes hand in hand with people trying to expunge their records, so.
Very true. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Morgan?
Sorry, I just wanted to thank you also, Mayor, for supporting us to get on the agenda.
Yes. Mr. Morgan?
I, I like to thank Councilmember Somerville for bringing this up. I do, I do believe when it comes to reentry and it comes to housing, there's, of course, there are so many things that can be talked about, about how imbalanced it is. However, it's a line within the article that says, it's about social equity. And I just want to start to state for the record, social equity programs that exist in California, Nevada, New Jersey, Illinois, Arizona, and Michigan are failing by definition. And, and some of these languages like to promote social equity to negatively impact the communities. That's so broad because I think the social equity programs use that statement. And their intent is good, however, that's not, hasn't been happening. I know some of the best laid plans go to the wayside, however. So I know the intentions while youth marijuana is in increase. While, again, the equity program is doing its best to make good with some of the good intentions that it has. And it's just, it's not all across the country. So I hope the money that we set aside can do, as it said, that, that we can do. So I, I, I'm hopeful, even though I'm cynical about the entire industry. But I hope that we can somehow utilize some of this money to make good on some of what we want to happen here in Ypsilanti. Because the first year, the social equity, first year marijuana gift over $400 million, and we're still getting pennies. So I hope we get to see how all this marijuana makes something happen positive for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Any other questions or comments? Seeing that, I do have a question following Mr. Morgan's comments. How much, and maybe somebody can answer this for us. How much money actually came into the, the city fund from all the marijuana activity that we have here in the city?
So the, the social equity fund?
Not just, I'm not talking about the social, I'm talking about.
Yeah, so right, right now, we're not getting any revenue sharing from the state because that won't start until, I believe, the end of this, this year. It was two years after, like, the start of recreational sales at the state level. And then that's 15% to the local municipalities that opted in to recreational sales. And it's based on a percentage of facility types. And Francis or Joe could correct me, but it's 15% to the local municipalities. So in Washtenaw County, the only two municipalities that opted in would be Ann Arbor and the city of Ypsilanti. But we won't see any of that funding yet. We'll see that next year. And then it's also 15% to the county, even though the county didn't opt in. It's based on Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti opting in because we're within Washtenaw County. So it's 15% of revenue sharing. And then the other percentage is 35% to the school, the school fund. But I, if Joe might be able to correct me, but I, that's, that's my understanding, everything that I've gotten from the MRA and like the MML, so.
And the only funds we've received is from application fees.
Yeah.
Point. Reagan can get you that number, and we can email it to you tomorrow. But that's the only funding that we've received so far. Okay, thank you.
So city manager, last fiscal year, we received for medical and adult use, we used, we received $55,000.
In just fees?
Application fees, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. And that went into the general fund?
$44,000 went into the general fund and $11,000 went into the, the.
Social equity. All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing now, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item. Resolution number 2021-044. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the certain lease operation and management agreement between the city of Ypsilanti and the Ypsilanti Senior Center and Michigan Nonprofit Corporation is approved. And the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the city, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
A move?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions? I see Mr. Barr has joined us. Mr. Barr?
Yes, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've been working for some time on this matter with the friends of the Senior Center. And the director, Monica Prince, is here on the meeting and would like to mention a few items for you. And also Attorney Carl Shire, who was working for the center, is here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lang, would you please promote Monica, please? Ms. Prince?
They're, they're, both the attorney and Monica are now able to speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Most of you know me, I'm Monica Prince. Second, okay. I've been the director here at the center for the past 15 years. The Ypsilanti Senior Center has a long and rich history. It was formed originally to be a clubhouse or gathering place for older adults. It has since grown to be much more than that. Senior centers around the area have taken new roles as times and older adults change. And we are excited to start a new era. Over the past few years, our volunteer board and staff have been busy becoming a 501(c)(3), developing more solid mission statement, and organizing the center operations to be productive, successful, and adapt to the times. We are working with the U of M Ross Business School Student Group to develop a fundraising strategy to be able to fulfill our mission. Our mission is creating great experiences for older adults in a welcoming environment that encourages learning, active engagement, fitness, and healthy living. Because of the pandemic, our delivery of this mission Because of the pandemic, our delivery of this mission has changed, but it is still our focus. Over the past year, one area that we have focused on is food insecurity for older adults. We have distributed over 5,600 meals in the past year for those that are over 60 years of age. We have also partnered with organizations to provide fresh produce, meat, and dairy on a regular basis. Our exercise and enrichment classes have become virtual to keep active seniors active. And we have partnered with several organizations and universities to provide technology-based help for older adults who feel isolated during this time. We are also exploring intergenerational projects that will benefit both older adults and youth in the area. I want to thank John Barr, the city staff, the city council, and the mayor for continuing to support the senior center to help us serve older adults and the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica.
Attorney Shire is here, if you have some questions.
Is there someone, anyone, that has a question? Mr. Morgan, you're muted. Mr. Morgan, you're muted.
You know I can't hear myself muted. Am I asking Mr. Barr, or am I asking Ms. Monica Prince?
You're asking the attorney, I believe. Or, Mr. Barr, you want to answer that one?
Sure, go ahead and ask the question. We'll find out who answers.
Or, Mr. Barr, from 2010 to 2020, how much did the senior center have to pay? I see they have to pay a dollar in the next two years. So what did they have to pay in 2010 to 2020?
Well, they didn't pay anything. The city paid, I think, around $6,000 a year, but there wasn't a formalized agreement. The dollar that you're talking about, that they pay, is to make the agreement legal under the law.
So how was those last, were the last 10 years, were they legal? Were they documented?
Yes.
Okay. And the next, what's their biggest source of income? How do they generate revenue?
Well, I'm going to let Ms. Prince answer that, please.
Actually, a large portion of our interview, our revenue comes from renting the building on weekends. We also have a great donor base and have been very successful in grants.
How much would you say that you guys averaged in 2018 in building rentals? How much would you say you guys made?
You're stretching my brain here. I think it was close to $20,000 for rentals.
Okay, and then you'd still have a donor base?
Yes.
Okay, and we're still giving $6,000 annually?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. No further questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I want to thank Monica for her continued work at the senior center. And during the meetings that we had with the attorney and Monica figuring out their nonprofit status, her passion, I mean, her passion exuded, and she puts her heart and soul into that community center. So I'm glad that when council put out the mandate that we would like them to, you know, be a 501(c)(3) and manage themselves, that they got right on it, and they made it come to fruition, and Mr. Barr had been there right with them. So I just wanted to kind of give kudos to Mr. Shire, and I forgot the other lady who was there. But anyway, those are my comments. So I'm glad that we ran it to the end. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Prince?
I just want to add a comment to Monica and the rest of the team at the senior center. Thank you so much for all of the extra efforts that you've put into the community during the pandemic.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. You know, HK Youth has rented the facility a number of times. The youth have volunteered at the corn roast in the summer. The socials that have gone on there, that's a great way for youth to connect with seniors. Yeah, this is one of those staples in our community that that's been there. And, you know, the work of Monica and the other board members, it's pretty evident. This is a significant institution. You know, I sat with a lot of the board during the master plan meetings and got an earful about how, you know, the questions they had, you know, after the freight house, how, you know, the city would view the senior center, and, you know, this is a step in that direction. And I spoke with Mayor, you know, last night about how, you know, when budget cuts came, the neighborhood groups and other groups stepped in to really take care of the functions. And I think that's been great. I think the 501(c)(3)'s status will open a lot of doors in terms of grants that you may not have been able to apply for in the past. And so I just want to lend as much support as possible, you know, going forward.
Was that an "um" or?
That's all I, you know, tapped out here.
Okay, Mr. Barr?
I'd also like to give thanks to Attorney Carl Shire. He's a resident of the city and has devoted a lot of time and effort pro bono to this, and I think he deserves a round of thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shire.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Prince, I'd like to say thank you and to the staff and the board members that have worked with you over the years maintaining the senior center, keeping it open and keeping it operating, and keeping seniors coming through lots of trials and times when the funds were really, really low. I do appreciate all the effort that you have put in, and Mr. Shire and others that worked with you. I just can't imagine us not having the senior center. And I know a lot of seniors that can't imagine, and a lot that are really anxious for the center to open again, where they can come in and have a place to see others and to just fellowship and have a good time. Thank you for all the work that you've done, and that I can see that you are definitely committed. And so I can say all the work that you're going to do. So we just appreciate you and appreciate the staff that has worked with you, and even the volunteers there at the center. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, if nothing else.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And Monica, thanks again, and all the best as the center goes forward.
Thank you. I hope we'll be here for a long time.
I hope so, too. Anything we can do to help, just let us know. If we can, we will.
Okay, council moving on to the next item. Resolution number 2021-046. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the City of Ypsilanti has the health, safety, and welfare of Ypsilanti residents, workers, and guests as their driving concern. Whereas the current design of the intersections of Huron Cross and Hamilton, Washtenaw encourage drivers to travel at speeds unsafe for an urban area. Whereas these streets are under the jurisdiction of the Michigan Department of Transportation. Whereas the City of Ypsilanti understands that a safer reconfiguration of these intersections is feasible and could be integrated into the planned road rehabilitation project. Whereas a 2018 road safety audit noted that the road diet would likely improve the safety of these roads for all users. And whereas a proposed reconfiguration of Washtenaw-Hamilton could provide bicycle lanes on Washtenaw from West Cross to Hamilton, and Hamilton from Washtenaw to Pearl, and safer pedestrian crossings, both calls the Non-Motorized Transportation Plan 2010. Whereas the public will be invited to provide feedback on proposed designs. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Ypsilanti City Council hereby requests that M.DOT pursue design for reconfiguration of the intersections of Huron Cross and Hamilton, Washtenaw to improve overall safety, particularly pedestrian and bicyclist safety, and improve pedestrian and bicyclist network connectivity.
The move.
Or?
The move and supported. Any questions? I see Ms. Westler has joined us. So, Ms. Westler, do you have something, a presentation for us?
Just very briefly, I want to appreciate all of the input that council has given and support council has given for the lane reduction process, since we began it back in 2017. Initially, as part of that process, we weren't exploring the reconfiguration of these particular intersections, but we had the opportunity to begin those talks earlier on in 2020. So what you see before us tonight is a formal request to M.DOT to begin the design process for what that reconfiguration might look like. And just want to emphasize that this isn't council's last input into this process. There will be quite a bit of back and forth between us and M.DOT as we hopefully arrive on a solution that all of us will be happy with.
Thank you. Councilmember Somerville?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you so much, Bonnie, for all of the work that you've put into this whole process with the lane reductions and now with the reconfiguration. The second that I became a member of city council, started hearing from my constituents just the major concerns with crossing at these two intersections, in particular, the folks that live in the neighborhood near Huron and Cross, and then also over at Washtenaw-Hamilton. It's just a really dangerous, they're both really dangerous areas for pedestrians. You know, and if you factor in folks with disabilities, it becomes even more difficult than it is for many of us. So I think it's a huge step in the right direction for the community needs in Ypsilanti. You know, I think we got a glimpse of the support, but there are plenty of others that didn't speak up during the public comment earlier that had been communicating with me back and forth over the last two years. So I'm excited to have the opportunity to rethink both of those intersections. And thank you again for, Mayor, for supporting getting this on the agenda. I feel like we've been talking about it for quite some time, but it's good to finally see, have an opportunity to go forward with this.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Wilcoxon?
I think this is great. You know, I've watched people come down the hill from Washtenaw, and then, you know, hit that corner. And Beth Gibbons, who is a sustainability commission, was in the meeting earlier, and she lived, like, right there on Hamilton, as you exit that slip lane, and people have wandered up in her front yard a number of times. And it's just kind of crazy. You know, this is completely designed for cars to move as quickly as possible through these areas, and it's a significant safety risk for pedestrians and cyclists. So, you know, this has been a long time coming, and I'm glad that Councilmember Somerville has advanced this, so.
Any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say that I certainly am glad to see this come before council. I, too, have been wanting to see a change both on Huron and there on Hamilton. The one on Hamilton, they're both very quite dangerous. But the one on Hamilton, I think, might even be more dangerous than the one on Huron. So I'm glad to see that both of them are being taken care of. And thank you for continuing to push this, Councilwoman Somerville, seeing as how they're both in your work. That was a good thing. So glad to see this happening. If there are no other questions or comments, we will have the roll call. Please.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Council moving on to the next item. Resolution number 2021-047. Resolution in support of the Medicare for All Act of 2019. Whereas the number of Americans without health insurance is still roughly 30 million, while more than 40 million Americans remain underinsured despite important gains made since the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. And whereas every person in the City of Ypsilanti deserves high-quality health care, and whereas never-ending rising costs of health care add challenges to our already strapped municipal budgets and our small businesses, which keep our communities thriving. And whereas the Medicare for All Act of 2019 could provide national health insurance for every person in the United States for all necessary medical care, including prescription drugs, hospital surgical and outpatient services, primary and preventative care, emergency services, reproductive care, dental and vision care, and long-term care. And whereas the Medicare for All Act of 2019 would provide coverage without copays, deductibles, or other out-of-pocket costs, and would slash bureaucracy, protect the doctor-patient relationship, and assure patients a free choice of doctors. And whereas recent polls suggest, recent polls show that a majority of Americans support Medicare for All. And whereas the Medicare for All Act of 2019 will guarantee that all residents of the City of Ypsilanti will be fully covered for health care without copays, deductibles, or out-of-pocket costs, and would save millions in taxpayer dollars now spent on premiums that would provide often inadequate health insurance coverage for government employees. And whereas the quality of life of the residents of the City of Ypsilanti will vastly improve, because they would be able to get the ongoing care they need instead of waiting until they have medical emergencies that could upend their lives, as well as further broaden burden local resources. Whereas the burden placed on local governments, such as the City of Ypsilanti, by health benefits for employees and public health programs would be significantly alleviated by having a federal single-payer Medicare for All program in place. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent economic recession has left tens of millions more Americans without health insurance at the very moment in time that all Americans should be able to seek medical help at little to no cost, thus exposing the riskiness and unsustainability of a health insurance system based primarily around employment. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council enthusiastically supports the Medicare for All Act of 2019, House Bill 1384, and Senate Bill 1129, and calls on our federal legislators to work toward an immediate enactment assuring appropriate and efficient health care for all residents of the United States. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti expresses its enthusiastic support for House Bill 6285, which establishes a state-level single-payer program known as MyCare, and is sponsored by Representative Youssef Rabi, and calls upon our state legislators to work toward its immediate enactment. So move, support.
It's been moved and supported.
Who, who offered it? Okay, Brian?
It's been moved and supported. We had a presentation and we did have some discussion, but is there any further discussion? Or questions or comments? Mr. Morgan, you're muted.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate that. This is, again, it is, it's so long overdue that, um, when it keeps coming up on a federal level, it keeps getting defeated. And if it wasn't for so many pharmaceutical companies and, and the policy reflecting the wealthy stakeholders of the country, it would have passed a long time ago. So I'm grateful for the people at the state level and some of us at the local level pushing uphill to make this happen. So I hope that it definitely gets the attention of people on the national level, but I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thanks to all of council for supporting this. It's much needed. Much needed.
Okay, council moving on to the next item on the agenda. Resolution number 2021-045. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas Ypsilanti Community Schools and the Ypsilanti Rotary Club supports and sponsors this public art installation project. And whereas Ypsilanti Rotary Club has fundraised to cover installation costs associated with the project. And whereas all banner images have been reviewed against the city of Ypsilanti banner policy. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the provided banner images for the banner installation project with the elimination of banner 37 and with any change orders to be approved by the city manager.
I heard, I heard this one. It's been moved and supported and I see Mr. Myers has joined us, but also we do have two members of the Arts Commission that asked to be promoted, please. Thank you.
Mayor, I have promoted.
Mr. Myers?
I have promoted Kathy Fisk and Jennifer Goulet.
All right.
Was there anyone else that was, was, was attending tonight?
Um.
And I believe.
Yeah. Lynn Settles.
There she is. Andrew, did you just promote?
Yeah, I promoted her.
Okay. She disappeared for me. So good evening, council. The the resolution and memo prior to that kind of explains everything. We were approached, I want to say, in October by Ypsilanti Schools with the idea of displaying public art on, on our banners, like we do for some. Like right now, there's the EMU, you are welcome here posters. After really looking at it, we didn't know who reviewed them because we actually have never had this request since any of us have really can remember. So over the past few months, we've worked with the city manager's office and the Arts Commission to, to kind of figure out everything. The Arts Commission approved the artwork in February officially, after looking over it a couple of times. And then the city staff reviewed it per the city policy and we found one banner to be objectionable. The Arts Commission, as I sent you in a minute, does disagree with that decision. But we, we think that it's important. And so we're recommending that all of the banners be approved and then I believe the one student who submitted artwork that we do find objectionable will be submitting another piece of art in order to be part of this series. And so I think that's kind of the, the, the short version of it. I, I know that, that Kathy, Ms. Fisk and Ms. Goulet would like to speak as well.
I would first like to, to thank you for considering this proposal and to give you a little bit more background on the artwork. The artwork was originally produced for an exhibit at the Department of Education in Washington, DC. Ypsilanti Community Schools was the first district in Michigan to be invited for this honor. And as a district, we chose the themes of diversity, equity, and justice as our theme. And the title of the exhibit was Public Education because we believed we were, we were educating the public on those ideals. And those ideals also come from the Ypsilanti Community Schools' mission statement as we are preparing students to be to be part of a community that respects those ideals. So this artwork was going to be going for May 2020 for an exhibit and the students, we raised a bunch of money for the students to go and see it there. Unfortunately, because of COVID, all that was canceled. And so we wanted to give the students another opportunity for this work to be exhibited and honored. And this work has also been exhibited throughout Ypsilanti in, in the efforts of fundraising. It's been at the Democratic Party Headquarters. It's been at Cultivate. It's been First Fridays. It's been at the Rotary Club. So the artwork's been exhibited throughout the town.
Thank you. Ms. Goulet?
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and members of the council. On behalf of the City Arts Commission, I just want to share our enthusiastic support for this exhibition being transformed into quite a powerful collection of banners that will be exhibited in the heart of our community. As Joe mentioned, when the, we've been working with Kathy Fisk and the schoolteachers and the staff from last fall lending support and excitement for this being among one of our first recommendations for a public art initiative as a new commission. And we, earlier on in the process, had viewed prototypes of two images, various graphic design layouts. However, at our February 18th meeting, the commission did have an opportunity to review the entire set of banner artwork and did make a recommendation of approval of all of the images. The commission was not made aware of the staff concerns in advance or during our meeting. We may have had a deeper conversation around the images at that time. Kathy Lynn and I were made aware of staff concerns earlier on in the process and had a very, I think, very positive and good dialogue around, you know, the realities of public art and public art can be thought-provoking and raise feelings and different opinions and the conversation wasn't brought back to the commission. So I can't speak to whether the commission as a whole might have made a different recommendation had we had that conversation at our meeting. However, we were, we all reviewed all of the images in advance of that meeting and gave a recommendation of solid support. It's super exciting to see the student artwork come to Ypsilanti. And, you know, I think that at a time, you know, when this amazing group of artworks was organized for the DC trip and then right to have that be canceled by COVID, I think that it makes this collection and the experiences that these students from early grades right into the high school grades are sharing some really personal experiences on some pretty tough topics. And I think that that would be the thing that as a community, I think as we dive deeper into kind of what it means to have a creative and arts agenda for our community that we kind of look at this as an opportunity for continued learning and sharing and awareness building and the opportunity for art to be able to share different opinions and different perspectives and how even the most controversial art sometimes can open the door some, to some really thoughtful and important dialogue as a community. So I think as we move forward, we're all kind of, we're new in our roles and we're figuring this out. We're learning together. I'd love to see kind of this collection of artwork really be the spark for how as a community that we can move forward together when we have these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Settles?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I just, yes, I just wanted to thank the council for this opportunity to show these students work. It is going to be such an amazing opportunity for them and their families. And I think the community would just rally around them and show a lot of love and support for our kids.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myers, did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I don't know if council has any questions, but I, 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 we are here to answer them.
I was just getting to that. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Council, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I, I wanted to publicly go on record saying that I support our staff's recommendation to remove the image 37. And I'm also opening, open to replacing it with a supplemental image. I think we received an email and we would probably have to have some conversation around those images as well, but not to get on my soapbox, but when I, when I saw the image, my immediate thought was I am, I never want to stifle artistic expression or close the door to conversations that need to be had, but I also, as a mental health professional, know how triggering certain imagery can be for young people and folks in the community. And those things can stem from, you know, adverse and really negative reactions to certain images as well as like, I wouldn't say positive, but powerful means of increasing, for instance, desire to harm by seeing certain images that, you know, replicate things that either someone has experienced or knows someone else who has experienced or are similar to feelings that they have once felt and what that does to the brain. And so my concern around the image is not being afraid of the power behind what we're seeing, but without the context and the ability to have dialogue around that banner, that, that photo being raised in the community and folks maybe walking by, driving by, and not being able to have conversation around that. I just don't feel comfortable with the city backing that image being put out without the ability to have that additional conversation that would be necessary to make sure that everybody is educated around what they are seeing. So again, I want to say that I appreciate all of the artistic expression of every student that contributed. And my reason for really supporting what staff has presented to us are the things that I stated before in very short. We could have much more conversation about this, but I'm in working with young people every day. It is really important to also have the correct context and correct conversations around imagery when it's being shown. And so that is my number one concern with what we put forth as a body and as a city to all those who are going to be able to enjoy the artwork that was, you know, submitted to us. But thank you so much for your hard work and the students' hard work. I'm excited about all of it, really. But I just wanted to share my thoughts on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
I'm not muted. Cool. I, I want to thank everybody on the Art Commission and I want to thank Ms. Lynn Settles. Thank you so much. And thank all the students for submitting their work. And now, and I, just to, I, I was, what, what Mayor Pro Tem Brown said, this, I'm, I'm imagining a lot of this art is definitely going to have some conversation pieces attached to them in the future. So I was wondering, what, what, what was the overall goal of, were we hoping to have some of those conversations with students, age-appropriate conversations from lower level to high level? But I wanted to actually take note also about how arbitrary, how broad and how subjective art can be. Because looking through the banners, looking at the one in question, it's, I mean, as true as it is, it, it, we talk about differences, it just says we are not the same. But then when you look at number 37, when you see the handcuffs, that's just as damaging. These are images that people have to interpret for themselves to determine what was the artist thinking. And so I think some of them can be more subjective than, than we think. And so if I saw the handcuffing of one person and not the other person, it says the same, that we're not the same. That's what I would infer. So again, when, when we, we're looking at these images and when we're choosing to take some out and add some in based on our comfortability, that, that's all well and fine. However, conversations are going to start and I hope that allowing this expression, allowing this art moves to literal, real equity being shown, because that's what's going to be shown regardless of the art that's being around on banners, is how it actually translates and triples down to real life. Because most people, I'm sure, see the differences. They see we're not the same and they clearly see the unequal justice. So I think that comes out in the artwork because art imitates life. So I, I will support it because I, I do remember subbing for Ms. Lynn Settles in her art room. We got a lot of amazing students. And I do think of being in, in their hometown, seeing a lot of their work here being displayed is an amazing, amazing confidence booster. So I definitely will support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Ms. Simmons?
Sorry, I had to step away, so I, I think I missed a few of the comments, but I did hear Mayor Pro Tem Brown speak and I think she echoed exactly how I feel about this. I think those wonderful pieces of art. But I think that, you know, without context, you know, some, I think that's a different situation. So I'm not going to rehash what she said, but, but I'm totally, you know, down, like ditto for, for what Mayor Pro Tem Brown said. So I just wanted to echo that.
Uh, Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, um, I do kind of just want to like co-sign what, what Nicole had previously said. I'm not a mental health professional, but I trust those who are. And I also, you know, I get, I under, the Arts Commission is new. We're in the middle of a pandemic. I do think it, like honoring this artwork is, is very important. Like this is a great thing for us to do for the community. But I think the reason why we have a city manager have the, the say in scenarios such as this one is to prevent public harm. You know, we have an obligation as elected officials to protect the community, the public health and safety of our community and glamorizing self-harm is, is controversial and problematic and I grew up as an art student and I don't want to, you know, censor art, but I don't think that's what we're doing here. I think that we're trusting our city manager and our staff's recommendation, which I think is really valuable. We, we hired Francis for a reason and I, I do trust her opinion on this. And I also, I, just in the last 48 hours, I got an overwhelming amount of emails from, from both constituents of Ward Three, but also just mental health professionals in the K through 12 setting. And I think that teen suicide rates and self-harm is a huge issue and it has increased with the pandemic, which is also something that we should be taking into consideration. And I think that there is a time and a place to display such artwork, but if that image were displayed on Facebook or Instagram or Twitter, there would be a censorship warning, sorry, not a censorship, a warning label that like before you view this image, you should know that this is maybe going to trigger some feelings, you know, for folks. And I think, you know, it's, it is a triggering image. At, at least from my perspective, it looked like those were pretty fresh wounds in that photo. Wounds in that photo, and I think that for, for teens, um, who are dealing with. You know, some severe mental health issues and crisis, seeing that, um, could lead to some really. Not good, um, consequences, so.
Any other que- uh, questions or comments from council?
Yeah, we got my hand up here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's all right. It's going in and out of space here, so it's hard to get my hand in. You, um. I can appreciate all the emails that came in regarding this image. Um, I've gotten comment about, about other images in this, in this, uh, set as well, but. I want to hear more about what the, what the opportunity for this particular artist is. Um, there were a number of other emails that. Talked about compensation for this. We have, we have artists, we're putting this up as a city. Um, and what do these artists get from this, you know, as. So often, um, you know, it's like, oh, thank you for your service and thank you for, you know, putting this up here, but it's just like, these people worked. Um, and, and what are we giving them for this? So I, I'd like to hear that addressed and, you know, what the thoughts were on the arts from the Arts Commission. You know, Ms. Fisk and Gulein settles, you know, it's like, what was the thinking involved in that? Um, and, and, you know, what is the timeframe for, for this artist for number thirty seven? To, to resubmit and what is the process going to be for, for that, uh, person to resubmit?
Okay, would, uh, I see your hand, Ms. Simmons, but could we have one of the, uh, maybe that's a question for Ms. Fisk?
Yes, um. I, I, I don't think I told you what my role was with the, with the district. I'm, uh, I've been a, a teacher in the Ypsilanti Public Schools and Ypsilanti Community Schools for twenty four years. Mostly in elementary, and I'm also the art coordinator for the district, which is why I'm kind of like the spokesperson for the department. But, uh, what are the kids going to get out of this? The, the reason why we came up with this idea to approach the city about banners in the first place is because. We had, um, a lot of funds that were raised for the trip. That we either had to refund back. Or those people who donated or entities that donated could. Donate it to the department. So one of our biggest donors was a Rotary Club and they. Asked for a proposal of what we would do with the money if we were to keep it and. We came up with several ideas, murals in the city. You know, billboards, um, banners and as soon as we said banners, a lot of people said that they wanted that. So. The whole idea is for these kids who had this very unique opportunity to be honored. By the community, which was so supportive in the fundraising. It was really, you know, amazing and to, to give them, um, that, that recognition that they. Um, had taken away from them because of COVID. So as far as monetary. There is no plans to give them any funds at this time. I, my hope is to, I'm in conversation with First Friday's Mary Detling and I'm trying to coordinate some sort of an opening reception, maybe even include some people from Lansing. Who have been down before for some of our other exhibits of this work. Maybe even invite somebody from Washington. I don't know. So, I mean, it's, it's just, you know, an, an honor for, for the students and for the district. I don't know if that answers your question, but. Oh, and then as far, as far as the opportunities for this, for this, for the artists themselves, for the artist of number thirty seven. I have been in contact with her through email and I actually submitted, um, three images that she chose. As possible alternatives.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons.
I was just going to actually address, um, Mr. Wilcoxen's, uh, question too about the compensation on behalf of the city. You know, I think as Ms. Fisk has explained, you know, they came up with this idea as almost, I want to say consolation prize, but I actually think a really brilliant. Uh, way to try to, you know, make this, uh, special for the youth who weren't able to go, you know, to the event they meant to. So I, I think it's actually a really wonderful idea. Um, and if, you know, the city hasn't commissioned these folks, they pay, make this for us. So I don't feel like there's a concern here for where we're taking advantage. Uh, of these, uh, young artists. And we're not selling their art and profiting off of it. So I think it's a really great, uh, community, um, opportunity. Um, in that respect, um, to showcase our young artists in kind of a pretty unique way. So. Anyway, so I, I, but that, that was something that hasn't even been a factor in today my thinking, I guess, but from that standpoint.
Right, thank you. Anyone else on council? Mr. Morgan?
I'm just interested in knowing how much each banner costs, how much the total project costs.
Oh, gosh.
I would have to look up in my files, but it's, it's, um. Each, uh, I think we're earmarking about six thousand for the project. Total. And then if anything, that, that's coming from Rotary and if anything comes over that, then we have, I know more of the funds that have been. I mean, we raised fifty thousand dollars for this, so we have, I mean, we don't have all of that now, but. We, we do have some more money to pay for it if we need to from the department.
I, I, I can't, I can't disagree. I mean, I know it's a wonderful thing. I, I, I can't disagree with Councilmember Wilcoxen. I mean, even if it was a twenty five dollar stipend per, um. I mean, I know it was something that was started off volunteer, but again, when their work is commissioned, um, and it's shown around the city. Um, and they actually did the work and you actually raise that amount of money to give those artists ten dollars, fifteen dollars just to show some, um. Some real support. I'm not saying it's not support. It's a lot of garnish, support and confidence. However, um, the trade for labor for money with people doing in, in the real world. I think that they will feel accomplished too, um, like almost professional since they work is being paid for and is being shown around. But again, that's a moot point. I, I, but I do agree that, um, I, I know they're going to get fulfillment. I know the city's going to harmoniously, you know, in diversity and have this, you know, good. Help, heartwarming moment, but still, at the end of the day, I'm sure they would like some compensation, but if that's off the table, uh, digress.
Ms. Simmons.
I'm getting a bit off track here. I don't know, I mean.
I don't think this is off track at all because, because.
Those are my comments for the record. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you. I thought you said, could you go off track for a moment? Okay, no, you were asking if we.
No, I just, I just feel, I, I, I'm just, this is not what we're being asked to decide right now about compensation for these young artists. So. You know, it, it feels like we're expanding the conversation beyond what we've been asked to decide here today. And so, you know, this is, this, the, the, the group is making those decisions. So for us to come and I think criticize what they've decided to do is, is really. Surprising and potentially, I, I just, I'm just surprised that we're even having this conversation in this respect.
Well, since you rebuttal, let me rebuttal back. I don't think it's a disrespect. I don't think I'm criticizing at all. We're just adding extra thoughts to it and they can discard them if they like. For the record. Thank you.
Nobody asked us for that, though. You know what I mean?
Yeah, we did. Actually, there were, there were several constituents that, that sent emails with that as part of them, and that's why I brought it up.
That's not what we're being asked to decide here today. That's like to me, a moot point and a separate issue.
Ms. Simmons, I don't think, I don't think that they, I don't think that, um, they were far off. I think that. Uh, if we, every, there have been several others that have commented on questions that they received in emails. And, uh, I do know what we're, we're, what we're deciding on, but I do not think that the. Uh, the questions that they had regarding the compensations were, were far off. But Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I just wanted to call the question.
Okay, you want to call the question? Okay, is there support for call the what? Mr. Jones Chance, are you supporting call the question? Or did you have a comment?
I was just waiting my turn.
Oh. Okay, there is, is there support for call the question or?
I'll support.
Support, yes.
So if we call the question, he won't be able to answer the questions that he had.
Yes.
There's no debate on this, so we had to go, we had to call the question. Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Motion carries, six yes, one no on the resolution itself. Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Can you come back to me, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, Brian.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to, uh, Ms. Guley, Ms. Fisk and Ms. Settles. Thank you for joining us, um. This evening and please give our congratulations to the, uh, to the students. I was very excited. About their trip and was very disappointed when they weren't able to make it. I had joined the fundraising, uh, crew that was joining. And thanks for the opportunity for the, for the, uh, display of the artwork throughout the city. Um, that's one of the reasons I couldn't understand. I mean, it's already been displayed, but, um. Anyway, thank you so much. Give our congratulations to the students and we're looking for even greater, uh, greater work. From, uh, the students as they go forth with their art. Thank you. And thank you to Ms. Settles and Ms. Guley for your work on the Art Commission. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, thank you all so much.
Yes, sure. Okay, Mr. Um. Halinga.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is two zero two one dash zero four eight. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas COVID nineteen has resulted in more than five hundred thousand deaths throughout the United States. And whereas Washtenaw County has had seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy nine laboratory confirmed cases. With total of two hundred and thirty five total deaths, with the majority following in the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight zip codes. And whereas data shows that the majority of vaccines are being distributed to northern Michigan versus southern Michigan. And whereas additional vaccines were distributed to Detroit, a predominantly African American community. And the same consideration should be provided to Washtenaw County with the highest population of African Americans living in the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight zip codes. And whereas several churches located in the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight zip codes have offered to act as distribution centers for vaccines. And whereas Washtenaw County is receiving less vaccines because of the social vulnerability index. Causing African Americans to be penalized for living near a more affluent community. And whereas only six point six percent of vaccines have been administered, administered to African Americans living in Washtenaw County. Even though African Americans are forty eight percent of the diagnosed cases of COVID nineteen. And whereas there have been reports that African American senior citizens that are eligible for the vaccine have been denied. And whereas Washtenaw County has two major healthcare facilities and its employees require a large amount of vaccine. Distributed to the county, putting African Americans in the four eight one nine eight and four eight one nine seven at a further disadvantage. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti implore the state of Michigan to increase the amount of vaccines to Washtenaw County. And allocate them for the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight area codes. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti direct the city clerk to forward this resolution to the office of the governor.
Good move.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. It's open for discussion, questions. All right, seeing that, I put this, um, resolution for at the recent, um, town hall meeting that for Ward One. We were discussing this and there has been. Great inequity in distribution of, of the vaccine, not just here in Michigan and not just in this area. But throughout the whole nation, uh, whereas blacks and brown communities have been, um, some of the highest. Infected rates and some of the highest having some of the highest death rates, but yet the vaccine. Has been the slowest coming to the, those communities and it has been at the lowest distribution rate. Uh, at the town hall, um, both council member, uh, Wilcoxen and, uh, council member Jones Chance. Uh, discussed possibly having a resolution on tonight. And because of the time delay, I suggested that we immediately begin to. Call and reach out to Lansing directly before the time of the resolution. Uh, and since the resolution didn't come from either one of them, I did feel like it was something that, that we should do, that this resolution should be forwarded to. To Lansing, to the governor, to the, um, House, um, the Health and Human Services, uh, Department. And also to not only to, I believe, not only to our representatives that are there. Who are already supporting that more, uh, vaccination come, vaccine comes into our area. But to every member of the legislature. Uh, I do believe that we need to speak up because these are our people. This is our zip code and we are the ones affected by it, by it. And if we don't speak up, who's going to speak up for us and. Who better to speak up for us than we ourselves? Who can say it any better than we can? And we need a greater, uh, distribution of the vaccine here. In the four eight one nine seven and four eight one nine eight zip codes.
I want to thank you, Mayor, for, for the comments and for, for getting this on the agenda and I, and I apologize for, um. My stumble on this one. I also want to thank, uh, Senator Irwin's office for putting forth, um. You know, information for this and his comments during that town hall. And, and I agree, this is, this is just another one of those cases and it goes back to the, you know, the early resolution as well as how to, how do we achieve equity in healthcare? So, so thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
I also want to give thanks for, for, to you for putting this on the agenda. And, uh, yeah, it was pretty dis- I mean, the whole thing is, is disheartening. Um, the fact that we're here again as, you know, communities of color, you know, black and brown communities, having to. Use churches to round up lists of names of people to get a vaccine. Is really sad. And, you know, the state's, uh, sort of equity and distribution program, which was well intentioned. Has two really clear outliers, the City of Ypsilanti and the City of Pontiac. It seems like with two clear outliers, you could figure out what to do with, with two cities. You know, it's really shameful. And it does not give me a lot of hope for the future. It's just really sad.
I agree, it is sad. Mr. Morgan?
My only comment, my only comment. Is being someone who's, who has civil rights, who is a lesser human, these are the things that make it so evident. That's it.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing now, Mr. Halinga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is the added discussion regarding employee evaluations.
Yep, thanks for adding that on, and I just wanted to say that the tabulation has been completed, and so the next steps were to, you know, give copies, the tabulated copies to the city clerk and city manager and everyone at council, and I believe then the clerk and manager would decide whether or not they wanted that to be a closed session or public, and so I just wanted to kind of say that is where it is at, and so, so let me know how to proceed, as I'm still new to the overall function of how this stuff works, so.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Barr. Yes, Mr. Barr, I recall when we hired the city manager and the clerk and the positions that they're in now, we used the contracts that were in place at that time. Is, is it in order to possibly look at those contracts? Because we, I thought at the time we were supposed, that the hiring was done, that we were supposed to go back and get contracts that were made for the, to renew, to, to form the contracts and, and settle on a contract for each of these positions. We were, that was a time when we were doing things very, very expediently, very quickly, and this is just a question.
I'm not sure exactly what the question is, but of course, you can look at the contracts at any time. If you wish, I'll look at the contracts. I don't have it on the top of my head what the term was. I believe they automatically renew, but I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. All right, thank, if you would, please. Thank you.
I will, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Simmons for really spearheading it, for following up, for initiating, and for keeping us on track. And thank you for tabulating, and I really appreciate your work on this. Thank you, Councilwoman Simmons.
Oh, you're welcome, no problem. And so, like I said, if, just let me know if I, I can email them out and we can, you know, I guess, I don't know, the clerk and manager want to review it first and then decide, you know, again, that's the part I'm, I'm new to, so let me know, and I'll send it out to everybody, and then go from there, I guess, so, or however you want to proceed. That's all I guess I'm wondering about.
I, I agree. I like what you said. Send it out, and then we can decide if we want it public or closed. I'm not opposed to open, but depends on what I see. So, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you for that report. Thank you for the committee, Mayor Pro Tem Brown, Mr. Morgan, and Ms. Simmons, and Ms. Simmons, thank you for being the workhorse of that committee. It seems like that you did the, the heavy load and pulling it together and tabulating, so thank you. And we just wait for that and wait to decide to see if they, if the two would like to have what their decision is on receiving and hearing those, so.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll finalize the formatting, and then I should send it out by the end of the week at the latest, and I'll, I guess I'll email those to everybody, and then we can wait to hear from the city manager and city clerk what they would like to do in relation to our, how we discuss it. So, sounds good. Thank you so much, and I appreciate Councilmember Morgan and your Jim Brown for their assistance to me as well, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Halinga?
Next item on the agenda is the liaison reports.
All right, for SimCOG, I sent out, I forwarded an email to everyone from, that I received from SimCOG. I don't know if you are, are receiving emails from SimCOG. If so, I don't need to continue to forward them. Okay, SimCOG's General Assembly is coming up on March 18th, and I did, so if anyone wants to attend, you do need to register for that, and they will send you a confirmation. I attended another, a different webinar with SimCOG a couple of weeks ago, but if everyone is getting those invites from SimCOG, I will leave it there. But we're looking forward, I'm looking forward to the General Assembly, and with it being, it's general, usually one day, but with it being virtual, it's going to be actually two days, the 17th and the 18th of March, so that's it for me.
Do they overlap with the MML?
Slightly.
The 16th and 17th, and then this.
Forever that, you know, they need to, to change that, because many, most of the people that are in SimCOG are also at MML, so. And I've talked to both entities about that, but it, they haven't made the changes yet.
That's strange.
I know. I think so, too. Okay. That's for, it for me, Mr. Halinga.
Also, next thing on the under liaison course is Washtenaw Area Transportation Study.
Yeah, we did have a meeting last month, and we were due for one this month as well. I think the biggest takeaway was that there was some, a present, well, I guess it wasn't really a presentation, but there was discussion about regional transportation, and that, that is still, you know, alive and well, and there's still discussions happening, and they've been, you know, kind of asking about, you know, the interest level and how, you know, we decide to kind of invest in this area. And I, you know, expressed that, you know, our city is very interested in, you know, rail, you know, from a regional transportation aspect. But anyway, those, those conversations, like I said, are, are still out there and happening, and I think that there'll be another village, or I'm sorry, a vote, you know, in the maybe next general election or something. I can't remember, I don't have my notes handy about that, but anyway, so, so I was excited to hear that there's, you know, there's still a lot of, of kind of activity and things happening in regards to that, so just mentioning that's, that's out there.
Can I ask a question about that? I, I was aware that, like, Oakland County and, I forget the other county to the north of Detroit, were the ones that, that really pulled out of the, the regional transit. Are they reconsidering that, or they're pretty much saying, we got to go to this without those two counties?
I think, I think that there is a feeling that we need to have, we need to do something from a regional transportation standpoint, and, you know, if some areas don't necessarily want to participate, you know, what do we do? But we, we can't ignore it, you know, and it's, it's a need, whether it's rail, buses, this, that, whatever. So, but I think that there's still an effort to try to get everyone together and, and make something work. So this was kind of a first conversation that we, we hadn't in a while on that, and I think there'll be more to come. So, just kind of saying, it's on the radar still, and I think there will be more to come, you know, in the next year or two, as they look to do things. And I see, I always look to Annie, because she's got her finger on the pulse of the state, and she might maybe have something to say, I don't know.
Oh, I guess I don't really have any, you know, thing to say at the state level. It's not a committee, my, my boss isn't on the transportation committee, but I would say to Steve's answer, it was Macomb County, I believe, if I remember correctly, when that village was up last time. But I do think, just like, the political science side of me, like, I think given the current state of like our federal politics, I think that things are looking good in terms of regional transit, thinking about like federal funding, so, I don't know.
Yeah, and there was, sorry, yeah, there was kind of a hope in the conversation, so I was like, oh, I, you know, you know, sometimes things feel like a dead issue.
Yeah, if we're going to get the ball rolling on regional transit, it's going to be now in the next four years.
Yeah, so anyway, so there's, like I said, people are, it's, it's, it's out there still churning, and I think, you know, we'll be hearing more about it, and possibly a vote on that, you know, coming, you know, to the voters of, you know, wherever. So, anyway, so that, I think that was probably the main highlight for Watts last, last month.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen, it was the last attempt to add regional, it was Macomb County, and it was, it was, well, I'll just say it, it was a very racist move, so you asked, you got it. That's what it is, and that is just time for us to call it like it is. That's what it was, and it was even stated, some of the statements that were made, it was made very, very plain, that that's what it was, so.
Yeah, I had been reading through Pete's, Pete's notes from previous Watts meetings, and, and that was pretty clear, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
Next item is Urban County.
No meeting.
And DDA.
Good evening, everyone. We met a couple weeks ago, asked a budget for the next fiscal year, approved a first Friday sponsorship for 2021, and approved a lease of the North Huron billboard. So the one right here behind Go Ice Cream will finally see something replace the blank white canvas. I'm excited about all of it. Take any questions. Hope you all have a great night.
You, too.
Next item is Rutherford Pool.
They're having the meeting tomorrow, so I'll report on that at the next meeting.
Council Propose Business.
Okay, let's start with, oh, start with Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, I actually was pulling some, can you actually come back to me? I was pulling an email that I can't.
I will come back to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Somerville?
You know, I actually don't have anything tonight. Thank you. I just, I appreciate all the support on some of the stuff that I brought up in past Council Propose Business, though, so it's nice to actually see some of that stuff happen after, you know, talking about it for so long. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes, I, I just want to echo what some of the folks said in the public comment before about the, the Black History Month Town Hall. It was really good, learned a lot, and it was great to hear from some of the elders, like they said, I learned a lot. I learned a lot about my own family, actually, so it was, it was really good. And also, the COVID-19 Town Hall was also very good, and I think it's up online now, so folks can check it out. It's some really good information. I brought in a couple of constituents in a separate room in my office to listen to the information, was not able to convert, but we'll, we'll keep trying.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. I got a, just a few items, move over very quickly. Well, I'm gonna start with Y-PAC. First, I'm, I'm going to give a huge public shout out to Kathleen McCormick and to Gail Walcoff, who are the new Y-PAC Chair and Vice Chair. Now, we have two women chairing the, the commission now, Women's History Month. That's a very exciting, new, fresh faces, and again, I think all the commissioners for their dedicated time, and so, and at this meeting on February 25th, when I was in transit to Kentucky, attorney Ellie, Ellie Savit, was a guest speaker there, and he was talking about his new spirited ideas and things he was doing in the office to change the prosecutor's office, and just some open-minded, thoughtful perspectives that he was sharing in some of the areas of focus, some, I believe, that was recorded, and people can, if it was recorded, I believe is uploaded, they can check it out, I just uploaded it to the agenda. And I have a note to say at the end about that, but I, I, that was a great, and I had a meeting last week with Police Chief Juisty, and we had a really great meeting, and as we were discussing, he was telling me some proponents of the COP program and initiative, and as he was telling me, it kind of synced up specifically and distinctly with some of the items in the civic program that I had sent some, some of council and some of the commission, but just some of the interactions that police and citizens need, unforced and more pleasurable interactions, when people are not in crisis, I thought, please, me, but the chief gave some, a real thought to that. So if some of you haven't looked over some of that, that's why I sent it for council to give, it was, it's almost like a, just a blank temper that we could add to it like soup, so, none of this final, but I think the chief is open to assisting also. I want to talk about, in, in some of these corner stores, liquor stores, and in some of our gas stations, I'm, I'm, I'm fed up with selling of a dollar seventy-five cent fifty individual cigarettes. It's a federal crime. These stores should not be selling individual cigarettes. I see them in and out, and I mean, they're getting like $20 a pack, and I talked to a few of the business owners, and which they said that selling individual cigarettes were a big percentage of, of the money they made during COVID, and so, and he said that some of the reasons they sell them individually is when they come in and get individual cigarettes, and.
You muted yourself. You muted yourself.
These stores and enforce some of those rules. And I got a.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
We did, you said they come in to buy.
Okay.
And then we didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, my phone, somebody had rang, I clicked it off. It was said that, two of the business owners said that when people come in to buy the individual cigarettes, that's like to get them in, to lure them in, they need a cigarette, but then they might buy a juice or candy bar or something else, which still adds to the bottom line. And one of them said, quoted that it was basically close to 50 to 60% of some of their revenue was just individual cigarettes, and again, and, and a lot of these business owners, again, they don't live in Ypsilanti, and I think flooding are, and again, everybody had their own right to smoke, but they sell them in whole packs, like federally legal, it's none of my business, but the other way is not, and so, I got four emails specifically, I don't know if it's about one landlord or whatever, but slum lords and needing to know the proper channels to deal with low qualities of living in some of these apartments here in the city, and so I want to make sure I can give them some credible information that they could feel like they, some of these constituents are feeling like their hands are tied, and that their living situations are not getting better, and the landlords are letting things fall through the wayside, so definitely that needs to be looked at. And helping a couple, helping as one particular citizen, then he didn't, he saw some increase in, in some fees he had to pay, he didn't like it, it's whatever, but being with him, talking with him, having some conversations, assuring him that some of these things happen, and walking him through the process, and he paid him, he went through, but it's just sometimes in our city, people feel like they're getting stiffed or whatever, but the city has a responsibility, and citizens do also, so just helping them walk through the process in a respectful way, and, and, and it felt good that I, I couldn't save him any money, but I could support him and, and assist him through the channels to help him get done what he needed to get done, and get him back in a good standard, so that felt pretty good, and.
Any outstanding issues? I know you did meet, and also with Joe Myers, but do you have any outstanding addresses or landlords?
Oh, I'll get those, they're probably in my email.
Okay.
But I, I'll take a look back at that.
Okay.
And I know I heard during public comment, we've been reaching out often, Mr. Yap, talking about code enforcement, and, and through the years, and I want to kind of find out if there's any teeth to that. So that's what I have, oh, and the last statement I have, listening to NPR discussion on the way home from Kentucky, and it says, according to the 17 security agencies in the country, from FBI, CIA, NSA, DoD, DOJ, that has been unquestionably spotted out that the number one biggest threat to the security of the homeland is white supremacy. Is white supremacy. And it's still on a national level, on a state level, and here on a local level, when we see these things on the rise, including the slices of the pie called. These things are still the biggest threat to the homeland across the country. And so just being preemptive and reminding ourselves that. Again, certain military and law enforcement have been infiltrated by some of these groups, and they won't go away anytime soon because the base of rage have been activated. And they're still, um, very prevalent. So be safe and stay, um, stay well. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we go any further, uh, can we have a motion to extend the meeting, please? It is now eight, nine fifty.
Make a motion to extend to ten fifteen?
Let's say ten thirty, please.
Make a motion to extend to ten thirty?
Yes. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you. All in favor? Come on, yeah, we still got some business to take. Don't get spoiled.
Nay, it doesn't look like we have that much left.
Well, but anyway, we don't have to go to ten thirty. If everybody is very succinct in what they say, you have to say.
Make a motion to, I'll make a motion that you can support. Make a motion to extend the meeting to ten nineteen?
You already passed the one to ten?
We passed till ten thirty, so.
Oh, we passed it. Oh, we already passed. Somebody supported that.
Yes.
All right, cool.
All right, um, I wanted to make a comment on, um. Something you were saying, um, Mr. Moore. I also got, um. Emails on the slum la, slum lords, and, um, that is something that I think we need to maybe go back and really start looking at. We had, that used to be, um, something that came up regularly at council. And I don't know if staff has really been on that after, you know, the oil, the wheel stopped squeaking. But please, let's, uh, let's get on that. And, um, with something else that you mentioned. Oh, um, I don't know. Is Chief DeGuste on the call on this, um, in here tonight? Chief DeGuste, are you here?
He is not here.
Oh, he's not here. Okay, well, um, city manager or whoever. And I will give him a call also. Can we get on the cigarette, um, situation? Um, the police, I know in the past, we have shut down businesses for selling, uh, single cigarettes. And, uh, it is illegal. And if they're being used to bait people, selling single cigarettes. Being used to bait people in for other, uh, reasons, uh, it's not right. And we need to do. Pardon?
It says so noted. I have it in my notes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, that needs to, that needs to stop. So, woo, all right. Mr. Wilcox.
Uh, nothing at this time.
Nothing, okay. All right, so does that bring that, bring us to the mayor? Yes.
No, actually, I, sorry, Mayor, I didn't go.
Oh, I'm sorry. I gotta come back to you. Thank.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
All right.
And I actually have stuff to talk about, but I'll try to be really quick.
Oh, Ms., oh, you know what happened? I'm sorry, the screen switched because I knew, I knew how I was going. Okay.
No, it's all good.
Okay.
Um, so I had some questions about Cornell. So some neighbors are unhappy, or, you know, constituents, whatever. And more to about, um, some, the road patching on Cornell. Um, and apparently there's a big sinkhole by, uh, just north of Ainsley. Now, I don't know that that's necessarily our responsibility. So I had some questions that I don't know if, um, Ms. Westler could answer. Or, um, I don't know who else is on the call. It looks like we're thinning down here. Um, or.
You can give us the location. We can see if it's ours or not.
Okay. Is that road, though, in general? Do we have responsibility for the whole Cornell Strip? Or is any of that? Okay, so it is all of us. Okay. Um, I'll try to get them to use the, the reporting option. But best I have at the moment is north of Ainsley. So I'll see if I can get more. And it's supposed to be a pretty, pretty nasty pothole. But I think they're commenting also, because there's kind of some, uh, traffic about it on, um, the neighborhood Facebook page about, you know. Patching little areas and then leaving out some other areas, you know, so it's, and I kind of noticed that today, too. You know, there's the kind of little patches happen. And then some areas don't get patched. So I don't know what the criteria is when they're out there doing that cold patch. Um, but of course, you know, our roads pretty much all need just resurfacing. So it's, it's hard to pick and choose. I get that, too. And, um, any, any thoughts on Cornell Street? I am here, of course, I'm looking at Bonnie, because Bonnie knows all usually on those roads. But I don't know, uh, city manager, sorry, no disrespect if you're hip to that. Um. Are there any plans for anything with Cornell? I just can't recall anything that, that has been talked about lately in general.
As far as plans for Cornell, are you talking about, uh, resurfacing or, I'm sorry, I'm distracted by Council Number Morgan's very adorable cat.
Nice kitty. Um, I, I think anything beyond just cold patch, just curious, because people are asking, and I just want to be able to give them a little feedback on that or update.
I don't have my cheat sheet handy, but I know Cornell is on our, I, I call it our next stop list. So Huron River Drive is truly next in twenty three. And then after that, Harriet and Cornell are our next priorities. But I don't remember which years we have those tentatively planned for, off the top of my head.
Okay, but likely not till after twenty twenty three, correct?
Oh, my, no.
Like, like, right? I, I mean, after.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I know, road planning is, uh, interesting. Okay, thanks for that. And, and, um, city manager, I just want to make sure I understand. The best way for folks to report, because I think, you know, the C-clicks fix and all that. And I, you know, we've got on the city website, there is the, um, option to. Um, sorry, I'm bringing it up right now. You know, report an issue. Isn't that the best way for citizens to report things, like, as of now?
They can text it. They can use the C-click fix, or they can just call the department.
And for the road repair, is it best to call Mr. Acres Area? Or, I mean, okay, all right. And just, okay, and, and that, just the main number for, for, for the area, okay.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how it's triaged, Bonnie.
Okay.
Um, it, I think, doesn't it go to Wendy at home?
It, it depends. Um, generally, whoever answers the phone will get the message to the street supervisor. And they'll check out the issue.
Okay, so just call the main number and it'll get triaged. Okay, great, good, thanks. Um, and then I think my last thing, um. City manager, you, you were helpful, and, um, I had emailed about an issue with a neighbor. Um, it was on Congress Street with the barking dogs and some other issues. Well, that's still an ongoing issue. Um, and so I think it needs to maybe be escalated, because there's some, I think, some other issues.
What's the address again? Because I think we started with the wrong answer. What's the?
Yeah, let me, I have, I, sorry, I don't have that email open. So I'm going to send you a message about it. My question to you was. The, the, one of the constituents that has some, some issues and, uh, wants to provide some more information. And, and so I don't know if I should have them talk with you directly, or, because I think there's some ordinance, potentially some ordinance issues, I guess.
Yeah, so we don't have animal ordinance anymore. So anything related to animals is handled by, um. The Humane Society and through Washington, uh, Sheriff's Office. So I just send me what you have, and then I'll have to triage it to see what it, where it goes, depending on what the issue is.
Okay, yeah, I think there's some other issues with, um, clutter and just some other.
Oh, just.
Some others, there's some other stuff. I think that might be, could be a hazard that might need a look see. So. Um, I'll, I'll, I guess I'll circle back and email you and see if, if they still want to connect directly with somebody, or if it's enough that I just, you know. Get them, get you the information.
I'm just glad you didn't say they have too many dogs or selling dogs.
I don't think so, but, um, yeah, there's some other issues happening and, and, and constantly barking dogs. And I know we don't have the animal enforcement or the, um, control. So really, the county sheriff department is, is the best hope for that animal control.
And they kind of triage it to, um, as I said, the Humane Society.
Okay. All right, it sounds good. All right, thanks. That's, that's actually all I have.
Full enforcement, we can take care of it if it's clutter and, you know, junk.
Okay, I'll send you that, um, probably tomorrow to follow up. Thank you. That's, that's actually all I have.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, yeah, I will actually be brief. I'll send an email to follow up, but I did want to just, um, lift all of the positive feedback that we've all. And I think we've all been receiving around the BLM mural and the approval of that, um, resolution at the last meeting. And also, I received correspondence from, um, Doug Jones, who did some of the previous murals in the community around. Um, like just questions and concerns around like proper tools and paint to be used to do the mural so that it will be lasting and look nice. So I'll forward that information that he, he shared with me as well. Um, and then I wanted to just kind of echo what Mr. Jones Chance said. About the Word One Town Hall, as well as the Black, I mean, Black Lives Matter, the Black History Month program. Um, and how just really nice. They both were informative, um, and well attended. Um, and really thank the mayor for your leadership, um, in particular, and just kind of getting our guests and connecting with those, um, from before us. Because I learned quite a bit on Friday, um, about many things that I did not know, uh, about, about the city and, um, its leadership at the time. So, um, those are really good events, and I just look forward to, um, continuing to do this further with the community. And, um, I had a couple of it, but they're really small things, so I won't take time to do that. I'll send out some emails, but, um.
Well, it's only one after ten, so.
Oh, no. Uh-uh, we gonna get out as soon as possible on my watch. Um, and also, I wanted to thank Clerk Kalinga. You read a lot of things tonight. And so I just wanted to say thank you very much, because I would have read half that stuff into the record. So thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Yeah, thinking, we've got to, we've got to make sure, I tell you, you know, Andrew, when they're super long, you can read it into the record, so. But, uh, but thank you for your diligence. I really appreciate it.
I appreciate that, but they're, they're council's resolutions, not mine, so I will continue to read them all.
I knew you would.
Thank you.
I knew you would.
I knew he was gonna say that, too. So, but thank you. Okay. All right, okay, so, um, guess it's the mayor's. I just want to say, um, thanks to all that. Um, all of the city staff that attended the, uh, Black History Program. And I have got nothing but, um, but good reports and people saying how much they. Did enjoy it. And even people that have lived here all their lives that are, um, a little older. Saying that they still learn things that, um, from that. Uh, one of the people, people that was there. Asked us if we, um, suggested, oh, we need to do this again. And, um, I think. Past, um, I think, believe, um, Mr. Jones Chance and I had already talked about possibly doing something quarterly. To, uh, around, um, the blacks in the history of, uh, it's City of Ypsilanti. The, um, museum is, at this time, the, uh, Ypsilanti Historical Museum. Is working on a project to increase, um, and enlarge the Black History Display. And information and artifacts that they have there in the museum. So, um, stay in tune. We will be, um, doing another, uh, Black History Program soon. Uh, meeting, I don't know, we'll call it a program, but what, something. Um, for myself, I learned a long time ago. That Black History is not just a month. It is, Black History is all the time, all year long. And that American history or Black History is American history. Without Black History, there is no American history. And for here in America, in the US, that, um, it goes the opposite way also. I want to ask, uh, Mr. Hulanga, is that, uh, online yet? I know that it was going up. I don't know if it, is it up yet? Could you talk to us about that?
Yes, the, the Black History, uh, Month Program is on the city's YouTube page. It's also, if you are looking at, uh, Elise Jacobson, who helped prepare the, the flyer for the, uh, program. Also embedded a link to the YouTube video inside the, uh, the, the city's newsletter. So you can, you can be redirected to that from, uh, from the news.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Um, okay. Uh, I don't know how many, uh, council people, uh, registered for the, uh, MML. Uh, Capitol Conference. Did anyone besides Mr. Wilcox? I know he did.
Four council members.
Oh, four council, okay. All right, thank you. Um, that, uh, I'm sure will prove to be a good session. As they always, um, always are. And that is a two day, uh, session. Want a carpool? Well, we wouldn't have.
So funny. Maybe it'll be warm.
Yes.
We could attend outside.
Well, uh, you say that, you know, smiling, but most of the times that I've gone to Capitol. They have been warm. They have been very, the weather's been really nice. So.
Eighty degrees.
Hopefully, we're headed that way this time also. Um, there's been a couple. I already talked about the General Assembly for SenCap. There's been a couple of changes with, with the COVID vaccination, uh, locations. The policy was that, was supposed to be that only those people that did not have. Primary health care were to call, um, Public Health Department for appointments. However, that is now changed. They have a new process where, uh, Michigan Med. Public Health Department, St. Joe, and they have looped in IHA to that, um, into the process. Are all, you can call, uh, Public Health or any of those to get an appointment. If you're in the, um, the group that's being served at this time, and I believe that they're still on one B. I don't believe they've gone past one B. So, or if you know, please let anyone know. Because we have many seniors that are trying to get appointments. And if you know any seniors. Who are homebound, um, that are living in four eight one nine seven or nine eight. Please, uh, you can send their names to me, and I will get them to the, the right place. Because there will be some in-home, uh, vaccinations being done, uh, through, uh, some of the churches. The ministers that have come together. But there's the four places, the four groups that I named, they will all be. Um, it distributing vaccine, vaccines at, um. The EMU Convocation Center. Also, uh, let people know, you can call Public Health. And get on the waitlist. There's a list, uh, and it still needs to be people that are eligible for the vaccine. But at the end of the day, they have some vaccines that are, that they need to use, and they don't want to waste any. So there, if you get on that, um, waitlist, they will call people, they're calling people. But you have to be there within fifteen or twenty minutes. So it's an immediate, uh, response. So, uh, I've been offered a couple of times, but I, that would really be a real push to get from my house. To the Convocation Center in fifteen minutes at three thirty in the afternoon because of traffic. So. Um, and this is just, um, another aside, nothing really, um, political or for the city. But I was, uh, something I don't always get chance to do. I was fortunate enough to be able to watch a couple of movies this weekend. One on Saturday and one on Sunday. And I highly recommend them. They're both movies. That are dealing with, uh, issues that we are faced with. Us in our society and our culture today. And one is Nomadland. Um. I could, you can tell that that is based on real life, um, living. So, and the other one is, um, uh, the US versus Billie Holiday. And also, that is, even though it's set in the nineteen forties, it is so relevant, relevant for today. it is so relevant, relevant for today. In nineteen thirty-seven, there was a bill in Congress to make, um, it illegal to lynch a black man or a black woman, and it was not passed. It was just sitting there in Congress and, um, even into the late forties, and it never was passed. And right now, there is a bill sitting in Congress called Emmett Till Bill, which is that same bill to make it illegal to, uh, lynch a black man or a woman. And that bill needs to be moved, needs to move, it needs to pass. And, uh, it was just interesting that both of these movies were very relevant to what is going on today, so, and I'm done. Oh, they're on both on Hulu. They're both on Hulu.
Okay, council, the, the next item on the agenda are, uh, communications from the city manager.
Okay, good evening, county mayor and council. Um, on your, on your, listed on the agenda is the budget calendar. Um, that's there so that you can mark your calendar, but two important dates are not there, uh, because I needed to, I need to run them by you. So I'm gonna have the clerk send a doodle poll out by Friday, um, and that's, this is for, um, the department presentations. Um, I spoke with the mayor and she indicated that she spoke with council members, and they would like each department to make presentations, like they, um, used to, not just go over what has changed in their budget. So to accommodate that, uh, we have chosen, I have looked at the calendar, and the dates, and, well, I should say the weeks in question are the week of April twelfth and the week of April twenty-sixth. So the clerk will send you a doodle poll to see, uh, which dates you prefer. We're hoping we could get through the department presentations in one night. Uh, but we do realize that there may be questions, so I'll, I'll go ahead and schedule two. It's better to get out early, come back the next week than to just drag it on, and then we're not paying attention. Um, so that's, um, that's my information for the budget calendar. Secondly, um, I needed to, the pulse of council regarding, uh, special events, um, specifically festivals. Um, we are starting to receive applications for festivals. Um, I didn't want to make this decision without having you weigh in or to get a nod. Um, we have received an application for in a festival to be held in May.
Oh, whoa.
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry, sorry. That just is shocking. Uh, I'll say, I think that is kind of not a good idea.
Okay, well, you know, our, our, our governor is opening back up things. These are basically outside. And I'm just gonna share with you my opinion, which means not a lot, but, um, I, I, I'm not opposed to opening up for outside and having the, um, event, uh, require attendees to wear masks and to, uh, comply with the CDC requirements. Um, it's up to them to police themselves. Uh, or we, you know, we could put a limit on it and they have to have someone there to, you know, to count. Um, but I think things by May, I don't know, the, the vaccine is out. Some things are opening up. This is outside, so. Um, and it's the vintage Volkswagen, um, event, so I'm not sure if, if that.
Is that basically, uh, on this, on Cross Street? Isn't that the one where they basically park on Cross Street? So, so if the street is closed for restaurant use, that won't, um.
Well, well, Wendy, Wendy knows that, so we are working around that as well.
Yeah, usually the Volkswagen one is actually in Riverside.
Yeah, it's in the park.
It's in the park, okay.
Yeah.
That's right.
I guess my only, like, reservation, I'm just one person. I still think even with the restrictions being lifted, that like, we might be moving too fast before we act like there's new variants out, but I also like, feel very deeply that our parks are meant for the residents, and if like, the only thing we can do is go outside and social distance of the park, and then there's like a festival that comes in and prevents people from like, being safe at the park, because.
It's not like.
That's, this is just me being like, overprotective, so I'm just like, I'm saying that as like, I'm extra like protective of like that element, but like, you know, I, I personally think it's too early to like, start large gatherings even outside, but, um, but I, I respect, like, I do think that as long as people are wearing masks and, you know, it's outside, yeah.
Riverside, you know, it's, it's a big park. So, but I'm here to get your pulse, to get a yay or nay.
I see you.
So, because I want to give, um, some feedback and direction.
Okay, uh, before you go on, Councilmember Simmons.
Yeah, so I, I might be biased because I used to own a couple of vintage Volkswagens and actually participated in that show. Um, and yeah, it usually it's in Riverside Park unless it rains, um, because Volkswagens are kind of low. It doesn't do well, you know, when, if there's flooding, so. One thing to think about is what's their rain plan? Um, but, but yeah, usually it's down there. I understand, I, I agree with you to a certain extent that yes, the parks are for, um, our people, but we have a lot, we have a lot of parks. They're great, and I think one thing that also enriches our city is some of the festivals or events that we bring. I think that's one thing that makes us a pretty cool city and something unique, and, um, this, right, it's, it's a one-day festival and it's, usually there was really good, um, it would bring, some of those festivals actually bring people to the parks that they might not come to. Um, but anyway, that one's also one that's not jam-packed with people. There's good attendance, but it's not super crammed, uh, like say, you know, like a beer fest or something like that, so. It's, I feel like based on my past experience with that one, that it could be safely done, I think, because it's outside and spaced out pretty well. Um, and right, as long as it's mask-wearing and things, but, but whatever, I guess we'll see what the health, you know, recommendations are, but, um, I'm excited to hear that's coming back this year, so. Some normalcy.
I just want to say, Councilmember, uh, Somerville, I, I agree with you, so, but anyway, city manager, go ahead.
Well, no, and I just like, just to circle back, that was just like a first reaction, because I'm just like, it's, you know, Marsh and May's right around the corner, and I'm just not super estimate, uh, uh, optimistic that like, the vaccine distribution will be as efficient as we have been asking for it to be, um. But, you know, it is one day. I'm a little, you know, I have concerns, but I also, you know, there's a chance that, that COVID restrictions will get rolled back again even, so, um, that's always a possibility too.
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Just a few, uh, observations. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not pro or against it. I don't believe, um, and at this juncture, I, again, I think we think about the Volkswagens, usually that's the older, I mean, is, uh, our elder population usually have some of those cars, and I know, we're talking about senior citizens and stuff. I'm not saying everyone who holds a vote, has a Volkswagen is old, but I've been to a few of them, and it's people who are a little upper in age, um. Uh, and I'm thinking about the porta potties, I think about vendors, people gonna be having food. I think about mask enforcement. Um, so those are just some of my concerns, um, and how the people, and do we get money for these, um, when people come to bring, uh, festivals? Does that give us any money? Or do we generate the money from?
We do.
We do?
Yes.
How much is this gonna bring us?
Well, it depends on what type of, um, event is classified as.
Okay, okay, because I'm, I'm just thinking, like I said, porta potties and like waste disposal, I'm thinking about food.
Yeah, and they're not new to it. Um, they've been here before. I can have Reagan look that up if you want that, and I can send that to you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I'm, I'm not concerned about the event. I'm concerned about everything that comes with the event.
Absolutely, and, and because it might be, um, an event that older people attend, maybe they won't come. Because, you know, they're afraid of COVID. I don't know. They'll have to make that choice if we allow it, but ultimately, we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna have to police ourselves. Um, but I'm here, I'm here for the conversation, and actually, before we leave, um, mayor, can we have a, a motion so that I have clear direction when I leave here tonight? What to tell those event sponsors tomorrow? As they're waiting, and I don't want to make that decision on my own, so.
Okay, so is it more than just the, uh, the Volkswagen? You're asking for a motion for all events?
No, just for that one for now. Okay, there are other.
I should, there are, yes.
Yeah, there are others, okay, but I'll have to, you know, we have to go, the state opens, you know, that's in my, my thermometer.
Is it possible?
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes, uh, you know, and I, I don't know, I, I simply don't want to be open. Believe me, it's, it's not easy being close. Um, but, uh, one of the things I've been saying this whole time is better safe than dead, and you know, yeah, the vaccine's here, but the rollout, it's not going well. Um, and while outdoor transmission is reduced to normal settings in a festival-like setting, um, you know, it's not zero. Um, and this is, like Mr. Morgan said, probably some of our more vulnerable, uh, the, some of the more vulnerable population, and those people have to eat and drink somewhere. Um, now, I'm one of the few businesses probably that's closed inside, but other, you know, businesses for a lot of reasons have opted to, to be open inside. Um, so those people have to eat and drink somewhere. They're gonna be inside somewhere else.
Well, actually, the street is gonna be closed, you know, and there's gonna be the outside dining, but.
I mean, that's true, but part of the appeal of festivals is that people come and shop and eat and drink.
Absolutely.
And, uh, those are our city's residents inside of those businesses. Um, so there's that, just from a, a, a public health standpoint. I, I don't think it's safe. I remember last, uh, April and May, and folks were pretty confident that everything would be wrapped up by summer, and you know, here we are again. Um, nobody, nobody knows what's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, they're gonna.
And yes, we do have to start policing ourselves that, at some point, but other people won't, and, you know, the thing about infectious diseases, it's not really limited to your personal choice because you infect other people. Um, so I, I think, I think it's good for us to keep visiting, keep revisiting festivals as time goes on. I don't think we should be married to, um, this is just my two cents, that I don't think we should be married to, uh, the governor's, um, or the, uh, health department's decisions, because some of those may be politically motivated. Um, not saying that they are, but they, they might be, and, uh, given what we know now, that transmission is not low enough, and that the vaccine rollout is going very poorly. Um, yeah, I just don't think it's, uh, worth the risk. I don't think the juice is worth the squeeze on this one.
I have one question, um, for the city manager. When, what was the date? Isn't it, is it the end of May? Is it usually Memorial?
My birthday.
May sixteenth.
May sixteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I guess like, do we have enough time to like, put out like, a call for like, community input on this? Or do they need to know, like?
Well, we've never done that. I mean.
I know, I guess like, yeah, I.
I think we just need to make a decision if we're gonna open it up for that convention, for that festival. Um, let them sign a disclaimer, you know, saying that they won't hold the city liable for, um, you know, people not complying with the CDC guidelines, you know, because they have to police themselves, um, and that at any time they could be shut down. Um, you know, those are the kind of things that, um, I don't know. I'm trying to work.
City manager?
Could you hold on, could you hold on just a moment, please? Clerk Kalinga. I need a motion to extend. Yes, I was thinking the same thing, so, uh, I wanted to tell Mr. Morgan that we hit, blew by his twelve, uh, ten nineteen, but we do need a motion to extend.
I'm moving to extend to ten thirty.
It's already at ten thirty. We're at ten twenty-five.
Boy, I moved to extend to, uh, ten forty.
It's worth it.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we extend to ten forty. All in favor?
Uh, yeah.
Right.
I heard two ayes. Oppose?
Nay.
Okay, so it's two to one. That means that there are four people that did not vote.
Me, I, I don't think, sorry, I was saying I, but I think I was, sorry, I had to plug my laptop.
I, yes.
All right, um, okay, is there, we've been discussing, uh, the city manager has asked us to, um, have a motion, uh, on whether or not we want to have, allow a festival in May. I heard from two council people, and they both were not, um, favorable, but we do need a motion, and, uh, if, I don't know if either one of those want to make a motion, or does someone else want to make a motion? I see you unmuted, Mr. Wilcoxon. Do you have something to say to us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious as to why the organizers of this event, I mean, I know this is their time, and they have it this time every year when they can, but, but why are they insisting on doing it now? Has, has it been proposed to them that they could, they could postpone this until the fall, until after vaccines have been distributed and?
Nothing has been proposed to them. They just, um, and they do this every year. And I imagine they're checking around in other cities that they probably go to, to see if special events are, you know, opening back up. So, um, last year they did it, and we had to say no, all of our events, I can't, so it's kind of like an annual thing.
Right.
You said anything, it's just the annual.
I just wonder why they, they're sticking with this date, given.
Because that's their date for Ypsilanti.
Oh, because this happens, and I gotta, gotta, thank you.
Kind of weird of them, actually. I, I believe this is their only.
Mr. Morgan.
Apologize.
That, uh, okay, Mr. Morgan.
I'm just trying to get some clarity. So, when you go back to them, city manager, you have to have a definitive answer?
No, I'm not going to them. I'm going to the special events coordinator.
Okay, and, um, and secondly, if they, if they, if, if they bypassed Ypsilanti, they can still have their festival in other places this year.
Probably.
So we're not, okay, so yeah, so we're not, okay, so we're not, it's not like if we don't have, they don't have it here, they won't be able to have it. Um, if I had to vote on it, and if I had to.
I don't know what they, you know, I don't know what their schedule is like. I just know it's a festival that has been held in Ypsilanti for many, many years.
Okay, I'm saying if I had to vote on them doing a festival in May in Ypsilanti, it would be no.
Okay.
If I had to vote.
Ms. Simmons.
So, based on my, again, my, I mean, I used to be a member of this group back in the day, and, um, so this is their one annual event, you know, they just do this event and, right, it's traditionally been in Ypsilanti. I believe it was someplace else years and years and years ago. It didn't work out well there, and Ypsilanti has been kind of the place of, um, you know, that they've enjoyed doing this. They have, but anyway, I mean, they have some other minor events, but, but this is their one big to-do. Um, so I, I guess I would say, if we're not comfortable, because to me, I would say whatever the public health officials are saying for what we need to do in May, because they've been informing us about, you know, inside activities and outside gatherings, that that should inform this event. And so, you know, if, if, if they're able to have a gathering with X amount of people outside with masking, um, I think, you know, based on, um, uh, you know.
What the.
Apparently at, I, I think that's okay, but, but what I was gonna say, otherwise we suggest perhaps they do it maybe later in the year in the fall. Um, but I think if this was an indoor event, I would feel differently, um, but I think, I don't know, I, I think I, I would support them coming on and doing this as long as, you know, it's supported by whatever public health rules are out there, because I think people, you know, we're at the point where, again, people need to start policing themselves to a certain extent, and we can't save people from themselves. Either the decisions they're gonna make to do stuff, like eating in restaurants, like I'm not ready to do that now, but other people are. But so be it, you know, public health officials said, you can. But so be it, you know, a public health official said, you can do this. Everyone's gonna have to make their their choice.
Mr. Barr, I see you have joined us.
The city manager has asked for direction. The usual course would be to have a motion in the affirmative to say we support the festival and then you can vote it up or down.
That was my next call for the for for a a motion so that we can move on. Ms. Somerville.
I just have a question. Is it is it possible for us to have a resolution on the next agenda? That will we have time to like think this through more thoroughly?
No, she's asking for something now because she needs a she needs, that's what she said. She needs something to to take to the event planner tomorrow so that she would know. So I'm calling now for, is there a motion? Would anyone like to make the motion to a for a yay or nay vote, please?
I think the city manager wanted to mention something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. I am not opposed to waiting a week. I mean, they're waiting on us to give them an answer. So if if we want to take this back up at the next meeting with the resolution, also with the application that contains, you know, the disclaimers, the CDC requirements, the things that they need to sign, we could just submit that and you guys could, you know, dissect it and vote it up or not. So, yeah, it it wouldn't matter. We delayed it.
Yeah, I I mean, I would feel more comfortable with that. And I feel like I would have time to like share with my constituents and try to get some community input. Since, yeah, I feel like that's maybe gonna help me make a better decision. Because right now I'm inclined to say no, but I want to hear what other people think.
Hey, Ms. Simmons.
I guess my question for you, Annie, is what is the question you're gonna ask for input? Is it about just having a festival and whether they want to tolerate festivals in general? Or is it about the public health component? Because those are two separate things.
Well, I I mean, I disagree. I think that the parks belong to the people of Ypsilanti and we're in the middle of a pandemic. And they're one avenue that people have to get outside of their home and, you know, socialize safely. I get that it's only one day, but I also don't want to make a decision. Like, I I've been to this festival before and I don't think that it's gonna be like a super sweater event necessarily. But I personally would like to be able to have a conversation with members of the community that might disagree with there being a festival. And at least if I support it or not, I'll have that input before I make a decision. I wasn't thinking about a festival going into this meeting because it wasn't, you know. So I just like, I'm not prepared to make a decision because I'm not like a public health professional. But I get that like as a council, we have to make public health decisions. I just don't feel like I can make a good decision without talking to my constituents or at least giving them the opportunity to provide feedback to me.
Fair enough.
Mr. Jones Chance.
And as we're thinking about this, you know, as far as the sort of government recommendations go, I don't I don't know whether we're using the state guidelines or the CDC or a mix of both. But, you know, again, things can be politically, I mean, look at Texas today, just announced next week, they're gonna put businesses back at one hundred percent occupancy and no mask mandate. You know, that's it's kind of insane. And these folks are not just gonna be isolated to a park. There are businesses that feel pressure and are you know, are gonna invite these folks in. And that is going to take those folks from out of town, engaged in whatever habits they personally police themselves to be engaged in and spread it to folks inside of buildings in a very concentrated area, likely Depot Town. There's no way for us to keep them in the park. There's no way for us to keep their self-policing isolated. And so, you know, it's an infectious disease. It just doesn't. You know, you can't self-control yourself away from away from this.
Okay, we need a motion to extend.
Actually, I'm done. I will bring back a a resolution and some documents for the next meeting. Yeah, thank you for the dialogue. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Francis. I'm sorry that.
That was all you had.
Decision tonight.
I already said the other one.
Oh, okay.
Well, you know, I want to thank the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Nicole and Councilmember Jones Chance for the Black History Program. It was well attended. It's my first time ever. So I want to thank you three for that effort.
You're welcome. So, okay. If there's nothing else for the good of the order.
Move to adjourn.
The chair. Please let me ask for it. It's been moved in second to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
All right.
Good night.
Meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone. Stay safe and stay well.